Good evening and thank you for joining our school committee meeting of Tuesday, March 8, 2022. We just came out of an executive session and we're starting, we're opening our regular session at 7:15. In about five minutes, we will be pausing for a public budget hearing. But first, I'm going to have Doug talk a little bit about the technical difficulties that we're, we have run into, which is why we're starting a couple of minutes late.
Good evening, everybody. It appears that the Zoom link that we had put forward for this meeting has been compromised. So there's a new Zoom link, and that is scrolling on our banner on Facebook Live and also on our, on our telecast. So if you're interested in, in needing to find the new Zoom link to, to zoom in, to attend the public comment, or to attend any part of this meeting, the new Zoom link can, can be found on the banner that's scrolling. If you can't find that, or you can't locate that, the new Zoom link, and you would like to participate, you can still participate via Facebook Live. So if, for example, you have a question or a suggestion for our budget hearing, you can put that information in, and that information will be relayed to us by the WCAT staff here this evening. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. We'll go ahead and do public comment, because we have a couple of minutes. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak?
I'm Chrissy Loftus, 68 Bennett Street. Good evening. I came to thank all of you for your hard work and dedication. Over the last couple of years, school districts have been placed in incredibly difficult, difficult situation, and decisions made have not been easy. I want to say that whether we agree or disagree, I appreciate your view and believe that decisions made by each and every one of you are what you truly feel is best for our children.
Chrissy, can I interrupt you for a second?
Mm-hmm.
Could you just go slower so that I, I'm just, you're going really fast.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure.
Not a public speaker.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I just think what you're saying is really important.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that we get it.
Sure. The mask debacle is over. However, I feel the need to share my opinion in, after listening and observing, the community discuss masking versus unmasking. I have been watching as loads of people log on and discuss how much their children's education means and how severely masks are affecting it. However, I am disappointed that once a mask decision is made, you can watch the number of people watching drop off. At the peak of the discussion in last week's meeting, there were nearly 200 people watching live, and when the mask vote was over and moved on to budget, there were about 30 people that remained. Is a budget not equally as important when discussing your children's education? I have seen the, in the comments section, people reporting that their children respect others if they wish to continue to wear a mask, but I'm lacking to see that the same respect from, the same respect from the adults. We need to set a better example for our children. I have sat idle and I have listened as people got angry not hearing from those still wishing to mask and suggesting that there aren't really people still wishing kids were masked. I think we can all agree that no one wants to see our kids in masks. However, there are still some that felt it was necessary, and the school committee represents them as well. People do, in fact, have different opinions, and all opinions should be respected. Perhaps by sharing my story, it will be, it will also share some perspective as to why some feel the way they do, as I was hesitant to remove, as, as I was hesitant to remove masks. This is Maddie, and she is a fourth grader at the Dolbear School. Maddie knows all too well what a virus can do to a body. Maddie was born healthy, and at the age of 10 weeks, she developed a fever and was diagnosed with meningitis. The infection affected her brain so significantly that she was told she would never walk, talk, and do so many other things. Because of Maddie's cognitive differences, and despite our best efforts, she is unable to keep a mask on, leaving her relying on others to wear their masks for her safety. I am hopeful that, much like surviving meningitis, Maddie would also survive COVID. How, if she, however, if she were to get sick, even just a slight fever, could cause an increase in her seizures and simple respiratory infection could land her in the hospital. I do feel it is time to remove masks, however, this is just one of the many reasons people may have to continue masking or hoping that others will remain masked. We need to understand that their fears come from their perspective and their life experiences. We need to remember that some people have medical conditions. Some fear for their children because they are not eligible for the vaccine. Some may have medical fragile family members, and some just fear the virus itself. So I am here tonight asking for the community to respect one another and try to understand someone else's perspective. Respect those that are working hard to represent every child and staff member in this district, and respect those decisions are based on more than just what you see when you log on for 30 minutes, and those with the courage to stand up in front of a group of people to express their concerns, because not all are able to do so, and their concerns are voiced in other ways. I wish to add one last thing that my seven-year-old said. When I told her that she no longer needed to wear a mask, she was super excited, as most kids were. Then she thought for a minute and said, "I think I'll wear my mask under my chin, and that way, if my friend is wearing a mask, I can put mine up if that makes them more comfortable." I think we could all take, take some lessons from the little kids. They are far more resilient than we are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Okay, so I think, thanks, Chrissy. We need to, I think we need to make a motion to enter into the public hearing. So I'll have you do that.
I move the school committee enter into a public budget hearing for the purpose of hearing public comment for the budget for fiscal year 23.
Second.
Motion being seconded. I believe we need a roll call.
We do.
So I will go ahead and do that. Susie Vayer, yes? Tom, Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Okay, so we've entered into the public hearing. Do we have any comments in, in studio for the budget hearing? Okay. Ryan or WCAT folks, do we have anybody on the Zoom?
The students are on, no comments.
The students are on, okay. Do you want to recount the email that we got earlier?
Sure.
So we did get a, an email with some feedback that Doug's going to kind of summarize?
Yeah, so, so we received an email earlier, earlier this afternoon, at about 12:30 this afternoon, from Kelly St. Hilaire, and she is advocating for training, implicit bias training, and also additional training around kind of gender and, and neurodivergence. And so gender identity, neurodivergence, and, and kind of issues that intersect with that. And so I think that this is an appropriate recommendation, and I think that this also intersects with some of the professional development that we've already started with our teachers. So we, we appreciate the feedback, Kelly. So thank you.
I'm assuming Ryan's going to tell us. Go ahead.
May I make a suggestion to, maybe Doug, if you want, or Doug and Christine wanted to share with us the, which is a public conversation, but the discussion they had with the finance committee last Thursday? Maybe that could be the finance report. It's all FY23 topics, so it may be, just to share some of those thoughts, or, or highlights.
Sure. Want to start?
Sure. So Thursday night, Doug and I were invited to the FinCom meeting. To, we did a, a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation to sort of outline where the school department is at, that we had publicly presented our budget, the $47 million proposal, 4.99 over 22, fiscal '22, to the school committee. And we just kind of highlighted really what our goals for the budget were, which, again, which was part of the presentation to you all on Tuesday night, and to highlight the additional full-time equivalence, the, the two science specialist teachers that we've talked about, the two adjustment counselors, the one paraprofessional at Doyle, the four special ed personnel, and then the, the four personnel that we've talked about that were going to be funded by the town from ARPA money. None of that was news to them. They had all heard that from both the town and from our meeting. And we just kind of talked about what those four positions would look like, that there would be one-year COVID-related positions funded by ARPA, and the reasons why we, we feel strongly that we need to continue those positions. The conversation went extremely well. They asked a few questions, but I think they've invited us back at the end of March to kind of go over any additional questions that they'll have. But I don't know if I'm missing anything, Doug.
No, I, I think the, the feedback that we got from them, and they were also very prepared, because they, FinCom has liaisons that attend our finance and facilities subcommittee meetings. So they had kind of debriefed very shortly with the, the entire committee, and we did an abbreviated presentation of the slide deck that we presented on Tuesday evening. And so the, what was in, what was included or taken out of that was kind of the narrative around school goals and instructional strategy. The FinCom was really interested in kind of the budget positions, impacts year over year, and how we would manage what we were asking for. And so we presented that information, and I think the feedback we got was very positive. The questions that we got were concise and kind of very appropriate, and, but then after that, and, and kind of the feedback that we gave them, it was, again, very appropriate. This is one of two meetings that we will make with the finance committee. And so this, the meeting that we had last Thursday was just an overview, right? We will go back and present after school committee votes on the budget, and then we will go back and present to them the school committee budget that we would like to move forward to town meeting, and get additional feedback at that point in time.
Mike just got one. Go ahead, Mike. So any particular areas they focused on in their questions, Doug, in particular, or not really?
They always focus on FTEs, Michael.
Yep, yep.
Right? Because that's our largest, that's our largest impact. They wanted to know what the overall cost for labor was in regard to the, if we're asking for a 4.99% increase. They wanted to know what portion of that 4.99 was contractual.
Yeah.
So they asked about that. They asked about FTEs. We spoke a little bit about special education. So it was pretty, pretty kind of straightforward in regard to the questions and, and areas of interest that they have. They're, they're very astute in understanding the drivers. They're also keenly aware that when we spoke about, as we did on Tuesday night, when we spoke about supply chain issues and challenges with human resources, I felt, you know, that they are very in tune to, to what is happening in the larger, the larger, not only is it the town economy, but the state economy, and I would say nationally and internationally as well. And so, and what that means, and all of the, what's happening in the world and how that's affecting finances. So they're a pretty astute group. Yeah.
I will give our finance liaisons a shout out, though. They were well-prepared.
Yeah.
Our liaisons did a really good job of preparing them about what we were going to present, and the reasons why. And so they did a great job.
Before I let you comment, I want to ask you, WCAT folks, do we have any, anybody who's expressed interest in sharing thoughts on the budget?
So far, nobody has made a comment on Facebook.
Okay. How many people are on the Zoom?
Great question. I think there's a handful of them. Let me check.
You can just signal to me.
Nobody.
Nobody. That was quick. Okay. Tom, did you have a comment?
It was really just to follow up. As a member of our budget and finance, our subcommittee, I had attended the, the finance committee meeting as well, and wanted to, one, thank and congratulate Doug and Christine and team for being as well-prepared as you were to bring forward our best, our best efforts. And that's obviously important. The level of, of preparation can't go understated, the type of work that is done beginning in October-type timeframe, if not earlier. And now is when the, you know, the fruit of some of that labor is being seen. So certainly thank you and congratulations for that, for that energy that gets us here. But I think it's also can't go without, without ever, you know, saying enough thank you to our partners at Town Hall. Our, the members of the, on the finance committee, you know, Doug Butler and the other, on the, as, as liaisons, that was, they've been incredibly attentive, coming to our, our Zoom meetings every other Thursday morning, and, and helping, you know, get us prepared, and then in turn, getting their own, their own members up to, you know, up to speed. And I think that process gets better every year, too. I just wanted to make that comment as a thank you to our own team, but also obviously to the, to the finance committee for being, being receptive, but not just supportive, being, asking some really good questions, and making us better at what we need to do to be advocates for it, too. That's part of the partnership, I think.
All right, we'll do one last call. Ryan, anybody? Was that a big?
Yes.
Okay.
Nope. But maybe, you know, maybe it's worth announcing one more time. If anyone on Facebook has anything to say, they can type it in, and we'll be happy to share it.
So, yeah, so we, we'll make one last call if anybody has budget-related comments that they want to add into Facebook because they had difficulty getting into the Zoom. Please do it now, or we're going to close the, we're going to close the, the hearing, and then you can email us. But if you want to do it publicly, now would be the time.
About 10 seconds away, so.
Okay. So actually, to kill some more time, I was going to give, give this update at the end of the meeting.
Did he would juggle?
Seriously. We also had some, some good conversation at our budget, sorry, finance and facilities subcommittee meeting that met last Thursday. I was going to give this report at the end, but it's budget-related, so we might as well talk about it now. And so we did talk a little bit about intervention services for high school, and the feeling that the budget was real, was strong on K through eight, and taking a stronger look at special ed, but that maybe there was some room to put some focus, some more focus on that area. And so we tasked Doug and Christine to go back and kind of take another look at the budget, to have some more conversations at the high school with Principal McLeod and, and the WEA regarding some needs or some things that we might be able to do, kind of within the existing budget that we have. So we're going to ask that Doug and Christine come back and kind of address that at our meeting on the 22nd, when we, when we vote. So there was some good conversation. We also spent some time revisiting the, the tri-board presentation and kind of the growth numbers for the year. And so it, it was a good conversation that we kind of revisited and kind of looked at the big picture and gave some feedback. It's, looks like we might have a comment.
We have one.
Awesome.
From Melissa Hart Quinn. So she says, "I just wanted to commend you for continuing to fund the counseling positions that were grant-funded, and hope that you continue to fund them again next year."
Awesome. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, I think we can go ahead and make our motion to come out of the public hearing. We've, we've been in for 15 minutes. I think we're, I think we're good.
I move the school committee to close the public budget hearing for fiscal year '23.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We need to do a roll call. I'll do that again. Susie Vayer, yes? Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Ingles?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Piscadlo?
Yes.
Okay. I feel like I cut public comment short, because I just assumed that Chrissy was the only person here. Is there anybody else here for public comment? And I did not ask, is there anybody, well, we don't have anybody on Zoom. I, I see you, Sophia. I'm going to call you next, though. All right, so we've got nobody else for public comment. So then, Sophia, we're going to let you give an update from the Student Advisory Council?
Yeah. So I can start us off regarding academics. On Tuesday, March 22nd and March 23rd, all 10th grade students will be taking the ELA MCAS. Students who are not testing will have a late arrival at school, and Ms. McLeod will share the full testing schedule on her weekly update. On Wednesday, March 23rd as well, at 8:30, while MCAS is happening in the building, all seniors will log on to a virtual, virtual credit for life program and learn how to create budget plans for, and financial future things, and successfully navigating life's unexpected adventures. It's a great program led by Ms. Simmons. And then regarding some extracurricular activities, winter percussion and winter color guard are in the middle of their competitive seasons and performing great. The winter percussion won their first show of the year last week, and the winter color guard finished second in their class. The theater department put on their first performance of Good People last weekend in North Reading, and are putting the final touches on their show before the competition on March 19th in North Reading. Voices of Steel was selected as a wildcard champion, and will participate in the semifinals of the International Championships of Acapella at Mechanics Hall in Worcester this Saturday. And the boys and girls basketball teams are playing tonight. I know the boys are doing pretty well. I think the girls are a little behind. And then the boys hockey team is also playing tomorrow. So good luck to everyone. And then just for some other school news, senior parents can check their emails for Principal McLeod's update from Sunday regarding important senior events. Juniors will have an assembly on Thursday in preparation for their prom, and the World Language Department is organizing an international trip to France and Spain from April 14th to April 21st in 2023. So all World Language students from the WMHS classes of 2023 and 2024 are welcome to attend that trip, and they can reach out to Ms. Mandy with any questions or concerns. And that's all we have for tonight.
That was a lot, Sophia. Thank you. That was a lot of stuff. Any questions, committee members?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Sophia. And thanks for the update on the, on the basketball game. I was kind of wondering what was, or games, what was going on.
Yeah, I think it's close for the boys.
Okay, good to know. Oh, we have Bella? Is that Bella? That's not, yeah. Sorry, Bella. I should know, I should know your name by now. Geez. You look a little different tonight. Do you have an update?
Um, Sophia, did you get to all of them?
She did. So you're good. I was, I just didn't want to, I didn't want to cut you off if you had something else to share. You're good?
Oh, no, I think we're all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, girls.
All right, guys. Consent agenda?
Excuse me. I move the school committee approve the minutes of March 1, 2022, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the March 2, 2022, school committee student services subcommittee meeting, and accept the minutes of the March 3, 2022, school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion being seconded. Discussion. So I?
I'm going to abstain.
That's fine.
Okay.
I had sent an email with a couple of amendments that I wanted to make. So in, specifically for the minutes on March 1st, I wanted to add, do I have to make a motion to amend, or can I just say it this way?
Why don't you say it that way, and then we can make a motion from there.
Okay. So on the 3-1 minutes, there's a, a section where we talk about the vote for the masks, and it said that the, the minutes say that it was a tie. I'd like to suggest that we add, "The school committee was tied and the motion did not pass," with parentheses saying, "Yes votes were Mike Boudreaux, Amy Lehman, and Tom Markham. No votes were Stephen Ingles, Kevin Piscadlo, and Susie Vayer." And then a second item for the budget review, I wanted to suggest that we add some language that says that the proposed, proposed FY23, Wakefield Public Schools budget has the administration requesting $47.6 million for FY23, an increase of 4.99, in addition to support from the town using ARPA funds to support four positions and the opportunity to replenish the circuit breaker fund. So I'd like to add that detail into those two sections that I identified. Now, how do we make that amendment, uh, motion?
So, could I have that?
Surely. I'm, I'm not sure you're going to be able to read it.
No, that's okay. Because, well, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to amend the motion.
Okay.
Because I read it, so it's mine, I guess. I'd like to amend the motion made to include the additions as presented and suggested by the chair.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of that motion? Amy sustaining? All in favor of the original motion?
Which now includes the amendments.
Includes the amendments, which includes all of the pieces that we needed to vote on. Okay, so six to zero. Thank you. Christine, we're going to pass it over to you for budget?
Great. So tonight, you have the financial report through February 28th. Can't believe it. We're already through eight months of fiscal '22. We're down to a remaining balance with all of our accruals for our purchase orders and payrolls from now, that we know, from now until the end of the year, minus some extra duty and some coaching and some substitutes. We have a remaining balance of a little over 8% for the local budget. We'll, we're definitely going to have some budget transfers to do towards the end of the year. Again, spending down grants, which is critical. So we have a little, about 20% left of our, our state and federal grants, and our revolving accounts continue to look healthy. We're still expecting, in the month of March, we'll get a circuit breaker payment, and then our final one for circuit breaker will be in June. So those will be in, in good shape to, to fund those out-of-district tuitions. But overall, we're in good shape, and we're continuing to spend down for fiscal '22. Does anyone have any questions? And then I think we have a motion for the payrolls, the two payrolls in February.
We do. I move the school committee approve payroll warrants number 32 and number 34 as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. See none, all in favor? Okay.
Great. And we do have a couple of gifts tonight. The first gift is from the Dolbear, Dolbear School PTO for the library to purchase some books, for the Diverse Book Initiative at Dolbear, $1,500. Do you want me to do them all, or you want to do them one at a time, Tom?
There were two of them, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Why don't you do the second one?
The second one, just to describe it, is we're really getting some support for Parent University. So we have four gifts from the Wakefield Cooperative Bank, from the Wakefield High School PTA, and Galvin and Walton PTOs. So the, the Wakefield Cooperative Bank was $2,000, and the other PTOs were $100 apiece to support Parent University.
So I move the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,500 from the Dolbear School PTO for the library to purchase books for the Diverse Book Initiative at the Dolbear Elementary School.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. See none?
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, you have a question?
A diverse book purchase. Is that probably similar to what Woodville did last year?
Correct.
I just wondered if the other schools are going to do the same.
Greenwood and, Greenwood did one, I think, as well.
I don't know if Walton's done one.
I'm blanking on Walton, if they did. I think it's kind of making its way across all the schools.
Because I know that the, the specialists met recently, and I think they talked about different book purchases they've made.
Yep.
So I just like it to be. So, I just like it to be consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I mean, it's great, thank you. PTO.
Um, all in favor of that motion? Okay, it passes?
I move the school committee accept with gratitude the following donations for the Virtual Parent University Program: $2,000 from the Wakefield Cooperative Bank, $100 from the Wakefield High School PTSA, $100 from the Galvin Middle School PTO, and $100 from the Walton School PTO.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously? That's.
That's it for five minutes.
Okay. Um, I'm up next, and I don't have any comments, so Superintendent Lyons?
Thank you so much. Um, with your permission, I'd like to take some of the topics out of order.
Yep.
I'd just like to, um, I'm gonna make comments and updates.
Okay.
And then, what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask, um, Erin Manzi if she can talk about, um, the trip that she's here to approve. We're just gonna need Ryan just to, Ryan is switching up the slide deck already. Um, and then Rosie will be up next for Special Education. Um, just, just to start off with comments and updates. So, we're, today is day four. Um, since we have changed the masking policy, um, I think people are genuinely happy. Um, it seems like they have moved into, they've kind of filled it, filled in, and, and, um, and people seem to be doing well with the choice. Um, I think, and I think that they seem that they're, that they're able to make those choices, so. Our COVID numbers at this time are a little bit higher than they were at this point last week. Um, we, as of today, we have 13 positive cases, uh, 10 student cases, um, and three faculty cases, and we have 12 people in quarantine, 12 students in quarantine. Um, and so, that's, that's just a quick update on, on positives and, and quarantine. Also, just in regard to the, our testing that's happening weekly, we have just over, I think we have almost 2,400 people at this point that are participating, and they have opted into the at-home testing. Where at-home tests go home, they're the rapid antigen tests. They take about 15 minutes to take. Um, we're asking people to test on Mondays and to, to let us know. And so, the positive cases that we're seeing are coming from, uh, the testing program that's in place. So, we feel like, yeah, that's working. Um, and I think the feedback that we've gotten from people is that they, they appreciate, um, the resource. And, and, um, they, there, I think people are fully taking advantage of that. Um, also, last week, last Thursday, um, some information came out from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed just refining, um, and restating, uh, protocols for managing, um, COVID. Right, and so, one of the things that is, is clear, and one of the things that came out from the department was just information if, about, if you are asymptomatic, right? You're showing no symptoms. Um, and you are a close contact, y- you know, parents may choose to, it's recommended that you quarantine if you're a known close contact outside of school. Okay? If you are unvaccinated and you haven't had COVID in the last 90 days. Right, those are the categories that would kind of preclude you from needing to quarantine. Right? But the, the important piece is that if you are asymptomatic, um, if you are part of the symptom, part of the, the testing program in school, and a student in your class tests positive, we will continue, this is not part of the guidance, this is above and beyond that. Um, the administrators will send home information, as they have, to let you know that there's a positive case, um, in your class or on your team at the middle school or in, at, at the high school. So, at that point, it's particularly important to pay attention to your child's symptoms, um, and to also understand if it's in their class, and they are in fact unvaccinated, right? You, you wanna pay close attention, um, and it's safe to assume that they could be a, a close contact, and you might wanna plan accordingly there. If in doubt, please just reach out to our school nurses and just let them know what your questions are, and I'm quite sure that they can talk you through that. So, that's just an update around masking, our COVID numbers. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that before I move on. Stephen?
Uh, just as it relates to, to COVID and having sort of volunteers back in the school, any anticipation on when we might be releasing some, some more data, when that's forthcoming?
So, um, we need to just get some information from Board of Health, and I think we're ready. And I know Amy has the same question. And she's laughing. And she, she, um, sent us an email yesterday, correct, Amy?
Today.
Today. Um, and so, yeah, so I think we're ready for that. I've also gotten about nine requests for field trips, um, in the last two days. So, so people are super excited, um, to really be getting out and with groups and, and traveling and, and doing a, a number of things, so. Some more to follow on that, Stephen, so I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know about when, about approximately?
So, I, I think we should have it by the end of the week.
All right.
Right?
We have parent volunteers.
Next week, yeah. Yeah, I know.
For the 10 cases, is it like high elementary, is it scattered over the three different?
It's scattered.
It's scattered, okay.
So. Other questions? So, this is, this is a, a really busy week. Um, we have a number of irons in the fire. We have about eight or 10 hours of meetings with our architects, uh, PBC and, and our, our OPM to really, so we've gotten feedback from the MSBA on the, on the information that we submitted, what they call the PSR document, right, or the, or the PDP. And so, this, we presented about a 2,000-page document that included information, um, and this is all organized through our architect and our project management group. In regard to the educational plan, that's probably a couple hundred pages. Um, but that has to specify, you know, what models do you use, how do you schedule? Um, that really, they use that information to really verify and to qualify the need for educational spaces. Um, and, and then, from that information, from written text, then what happens is a space summary is created. Um, but when the MSBA sends back information, like, "We would like to hear some more information around your need for space to teach health and wellness." So, we, we provide additional information and get that back to them. But the, the tricky part is that the way that the MSBA works is that they only work from the original document that was submitted. So, all strike-throughs and all added language is all part of one document that's edited one time, so it shows a progression of the changes that are made. Um, and that's being kind of coordinated, um, through our project manager, um, and also through our architectural firm. So, but this week, it has to be in by next Tuesday, but this week is really where all the meetings are happening. Um, last night, we met with PBC for about two hours, where our educational leaders, um, got to see kind of a slide deck on information that I think has been shared with this group, and we'll be getting an update um, from our architect and our project management group in our next, in our next school committee meeting. And so, um, that's an important piece, just, just looking ahead. So, that's, that's where we are, um, at this point, and that's what I have for updates.
Doug, can I add? I just got an update from Principal McLeod that the boys' basketball team won.
Oh, yay!
Nice.
More to come on the girls, but just thought you'd wanna hear.
That's great, that's really great. And so, um, I, I have a few other announcements that I can make at the end of, of, of my, um, at the, at the end of our topics. But at this point, I'd like to invite Erin Manzi up to the table to talk about, um, the proposed trip, uh, to Paris and Barcelona. Sounds spectacular.
It's not really that great.
Do you need any chaperones?
I can't tell you the one of people that have already approached. I have a waiting list at this point already. I know, so Doug, you mentioned field trips, I'm starting off really small.
To say the least. Um, is it, should I look here, or it will be presented here also? I don't know. It's, I can look. I consider this.
Right there, so you can see.
Oh, there you go. Awesome, great, okay.
If you need, John, I'm gonna click, I'll click for you.
Okay, thanks, Doug, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. So, um, thank you so much for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present this phenomenal opportunity for our students of Wakefield. Um, I'm presenting tonight, um, for request for, um, the trip to Paris and Barcelona um, for our upcoming, uh, students of, um, class of 23 and 24, uh, World Language students. So, just kind of like, um, get down to the bones of it. Um, so again, um, can I go back to that one again?
I'm not touching anything.
Doug? Um, to start off, so, um, uh, if the, if the trip is approved for tonight, I would open registration for our World Language students, again, from the class of 23, 24, which are current sophomores and juniors. Um, what's going on?
It's behind you, if you just like.
Is it behind me? Do you wanna, it's okay, I can just click, click on my.
Do you want us to hear? Would that be, you can see it from there?
It's okay. That'll be good. Um, so, we would leave, uh, Friday, April, uh, 14th and return Friday, um, sorry, April, Friday, yes, April 14th and return Friday, April 21st, which is the Friday to Friday of April vacation of '23. We would leave, uh, Logan Airport on that Friday, April, uh, 14th, um, and fly into Paris. We'd spend three days in Paris and then three days in Barcelona. We've decided to use, uh, passports for our tour company. It, um, comes highly recommended by Lucia DiMello, who is our Italian teacher at our school. She's used passports for many years for the Italy-Greece trip, which I'll be coming back in the fall to ask for approval for that, if this goes well. Um, she's had success with that program, um, sorry, with that company, so we're gonna go with it, really just to kind of keep everything, um, the same. Uh, the final cost for parents would be $38.56, um, unless they decide to register, uh, early by, uh, April 1st, and then there's a discounted rate, um, which brings it to $36.06. And then, we can go to the next slide. If it does, if not.
There you go.
That's okay, I can wing it. Thank you. So, again, some important dates in process. Again, um, up, um, upon approval of the trip, we'll open registration this week for students of, um, class of 23, 24, World Language students. April 21st is the early registration deadline. Uh, June 1st will be the registration deadline. Um, I will continue to have meetings, uh, through the fall of '22 and the spring of 2023, just to support parents with preparation, travel arrangements. And then, we'd be off, um, on April 14th through the 21st. Thank you. Um, prior to this meeting, I did reach out to, um, to students and to parents to get an idea of how much interest we really had in the, um, in the trip. So, I sent a Google form to the sophomores and juniors to get an idea, um, of who might be interested. So, I received 64 responses from students, um, wanting more information about it, um, potentially having interest in, um, attending the trip, which was a great response, more than I really had anticipated. Um, I think students are really eager to get out of Wakefield, Massachusetts. I think they're craving expansion, uh, to get anything but, you know, Main Street Wakefield. Um, so, I don't anticipate having 64 students, but if we did, that would be fabulous. So, um, we have 64 students responded. Um, I held a, um, a parent interest meeting, Zoom meeting, um, to just answer some questions, give parents some information a couple weeks ago, when I had 40 parents, um, attend the meeting, which is a really good, um, turnout also. Um, during that meeting, we, uh, I presented the information that we just presented a second ago. Um, we also talked about, um, why passports, why we decided on this particular company. Um, really based upon what I talked with, I spoke with Lucia DiMello about her experience with, um, with this company, especially during COVID, when she had to cancel the, um, the trip. They were really, um, they worked really well with her in returning, um, reimbursing students, um, with their money. We had to cancel the whole trip, you know, that was a little disastrous. Um, but they really worked really well with us, so that was one of the reasons. Their experience with international travel, um, the safety and peace of mind they provide for, um, for our students, for our parents. Um, really, the, the high quality of accommodations and meals where students will be staying. Um, peace of mind, having a 24-hour bilingual, um, tour director onsite with us all of the time. Having a, um, 24/7 hotline for parents and for students at any time if something happens. Their accommodations, if anything medical happens for students overseas, they, that is covered. So, really, more of the safety and peace of mind, um, is one of the reasons why, or many of the reasons why we chose this company. Um, educational objectives, so we talked about this at the parent meeting. Um, and just the kind of thinking about it, I could probably have 100 objectives, right? 100 objectives outcomes for this, um, for this trip. One of the parents mentioned that every step of this trip is a learning experience. From obtaining your passport to traveling through customs and, um, traveling, um, internationally to trying new foods, seeing sights that you've only seen on TV and on the computer. Every step of the way is really, um, the, one of the best experiences students will really have up to this point of their life. Um, the overall objectives, obviously, we want students to expand their language skills, expand their global and cultural awareness. Um, but I think the biggest thing is really that we want students to gain confidence. We want students to gain confidence and skills that will really carry them through the rest of their life. Confidence of being in situations that they have to adapt, that they have to really, um, navigate, navigate their way, um, step out, uh, step outside of their comfort zone and feel okay about that, uh, for the rest of their life. Continue on. This is really just more detail, not to make you jealous, of the itinerary that we would be, um, experiencing, um, Paris for three days, like I said. Um, from sightseeing, seeing Notre Dame to the Palace of Versailles, um, a cruise down the Seine River, uh, traveling to Barcelona, where we, we visit the Sagrada Familia, um, Parque Agüel. Um, I'm trying to think what else. We'd have, um, Metropas for dinner, Paella for dinner. Um, attending a flamenco show, I'm sorry?
The cooking class.
Oh, the cooking, the cooking class, yes, we actually added, that was a little extra money, but I wanted to add that one in there, yes. Um, so, it, it is, it's a jam-packed itinerary. The students will be on the go the entire time. The next one. Um, again, what's included? I think I better go on this one. My eyesight isn't that good, too. Again, round trip, transportation, accommodations, and centrally located three-star and four, four-star hotels. And that was one thing that Lucia DiMello had mentioned, that the hotels the students will be staying at are centrally located, that they can walk to all the destinations. We're not gonna be taking a bus, um, from one place to get to, um, some of the major attractions. Um, all breakfasts and dinners are included. Students are on their own financially, not on the road, but financially, on their own for lunch. Uh, they'll be with chaperones the whole time. Um, uh, as the, um, there will be the tour director, uh, through the, um, through the whole trip. Entrances and activities, um, and I'll talk a little bit about the, um, the passport, the travel protection plan on the last, on the last slide. What am I responsible for? So, real, I think the most important, um, items on this, um, on this list, um, the first one is the passport, that's, um, parents need to obtain a passport. The sooner the better, because it does take time right now during COVID. And that last one is documentation of, of the COVID vaccine. So, at the, at the current time, um, there are still many attractions, many sites that require students to show documentation of a vaccine. So, I would still like to keep that as a requirement at this time. Things may change, things change daily, we know that, so, but at this time, I would like to keep that on there just to, um, to be on the safe side. Again, the cost breakdown, um, is $38.56. Um, again, with the early registration, that would bring it to $36.06. I think we missed one. Did I do travel protection? There's one before that.
I'm not touching anything right now, just.
I can just talk about it, it doesn't need to be, um, posted. Okay. I don't know what happened. Okay, so, um, the travel protection, so there is travel protection included in the price, um, of the $38.56. Um, but, uh, parents do have the opportunity to buy additional, um, additional insurance. And I, I'm going to highly recommend that parents do that, due to the situation of our life. Um, it's constantly, um, changing. So, just thinking about what happened before with Lucia's trip, just thinking about our day-to-day lives, that we have to, um, work on the fly all of the time, um, the extra peace of mind, travel protection is $199. So, for $199, um, parents can, um, cancel up to two days prior before the trip. And if they, um, have the protection, they will receive 75% reimbursement of the trip. So, I do think that $199 is well worth, um, the cost. So, obviously, I cannot make parents pay, you know, really, to buy into that, but I will, uh, highly recommend that parents, um, take that opportunity to purchase that, um, extra peace of mind, travel protection. Um, this last page is just really some documents for you to look through, from parent informational letter, the company website, um, there will be a code of conduct that students will, um, need to read and sign, um, for behavior, um, during the trip. Um, there was the COVID policy, again, just interest. Um, there was the COVID policy, again, just interest form itinerary, Google Classroom, that will be communicating, um, with parents and for students through the Google Classroom. And I'll also add the peace of mind, um, protection plan onto that also, so you can take a look at that. And I think that's about it.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Tom?
Uh, thanks, Erin. This, this is terrific and it's really awesome to hear presentations again about students wanting to go places and do things. So, so, so very cool, uh, and thanks for, uh, for shepherding this through. A, a couple quick questions. I assume this just isn't for students in French and Spanish?
No.
But do they get a priority or?
So it's for all world, all world language students for juniors and seniors for class of twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, I don't want to say there's preferences. I think I really wanted to open this up to any world language students because they, I'm hoping to have a, um, a trip next year to, um, Italy and Greece for the following year, I should say after that, but you don't know if that will happen. So I really want to have this opportunity open to all world language students.
Okay. And how many participates do you anticipate?
So, I would love it. So thinking that sixty-four students, um, responded, that they are interested, I'm thinking probably half of that. Um, so I'm thinking around between thirty-five and forty. That's what Lucia DiMello has had in the past. So I'm hoping that's a good amount. So I know to fill one bus, um, we can have fifty-one s, um, between chaperones and students, fifty-one people fit on one bus, one tour bus. So we would have our own tour for ourselves.
Great. That's awesome.
So if we had forty, let's just say we had forty-two, um, students, eight chaperones, the ratio is one to six. So if we had forty-two students, eight chaperones, that would, that would be perfect. Um, but we'll see what happens.
That sounds great. And what is required at registration? You were talking about a sort of an early bird or registration. What's required? Is there a, a down payment or full payment? How does that work?
No, there was, I believe it's three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a down payment at that time. And then in addition, obviously, if you'd like to purchase the, the protection plan at that point, you have it, you have the opportunity. Um, I believe you can purchase the, the, uh, protection plan at any point of, um, of the payment plan. It doesn't have to be at the beginning.
Great. It sounds awesome. It really does. Thank you for, again, for taking this on.
Sure.
Y'all echo what Mr. Mackham said. These are amazing experiences and when I think back, you said these are things you, you don't forget. And I know from my friends that went from here quite a while ago, they still talk about it, you know, even when we get together, those that were able to go. And they sound, this sounds like really amazing experience. People want to go, but I know there's a lot of work involved. So thank you very much for even making this possible for students because, yeah, going to Paris sounds great, but it's a lot of responsibility and it's a lot of work beforehand and while you're there. So thank you for, for making this possible. My only question, of course, is the cost and, 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 you know, wanting to make this available to as many students as possible and not that, and that may limit certainly some people, but are there any opportunities either for a reduced cost, fundraising, anything on the lines maybe to assist people who, um, may have a little bit more challenge coming up with that tuition?
Absolutely. Um, I've thought of this because I, to me, I would never want to limit this opportunity to, um, to students. I would, if it was my choice, we'd be bringing everyone, right? I think every student, um, should have this opportunity to experience travel, to experience other cultures, other languages. It's, again, um, so impactful. Um, I will definitely look into something that we can do for students. Um, I know that we've done that in the past for smaller trips. Obviously, I've run the, um, the New York City trip many years and I know that we've provided financial aid for some students. So we have as many students as possible who would like to have this experience, to engage in it and have this experience. So I don't, I have to be honest, I don't have a plan in place right now, but it is something that I've been thinking about because I would never want to deny a student that would love to go and not have that opportunity. I agree.
Definitely. Yeah. Thank you.
So I will definitely get back to you on that one and think about it a little bit further and really maybe to even talk to Lucia DiMello, who I know has run this, um, a similar, um, um, trip for many years, and she may give me a little insight and some ideas about what I could do.
That'd be great. Thank you. And thanks for bringing this forward. It's amazing.
First, thank you, Kevin, for bringing up sort of that topic. That was one thing I was gonna ask about. Um, but I'm, I'm curious on the one to six chaperone to student ratio in terms of, does that mean, um, sort of chaperones that are traveling with the students from Wakefield and then they would meet up with, uh, specific passports, sort of tour director when they get sort of at the destination? Is, is that what that is?
So there would be chaperones from our school, so teachers from our school. So we would have, um, six students for one chaper, for one chaperone from Wayfarmore High School. Is that what you mean?
Yep. And then when they get there, there'd be a person from the passports company that would sort of be their tour director for the duration of the trip while they were there?
Correct.
Great.
Correct. Yes.
So I was gonna ask about chaperones. Teacher chaperones, not parents?
At this point, I have so many teachers that are asking. At this point, I, I believe we'll have teacher chaperones. Um, there has, in the past, when we've run New York City, there have been some situations that we've, uh, a parent has asked to, um, to attend the trip, um, depending on some of the students that, um, if any students have, um, significant needs, um, and we've had, um, some parents join us.
Erin, do you give preferential treatment as far as chaperones, the people that speak either French or Spanish?
Why do you speak French?
No, I don't. But my name is French.
I think everyone's signing up for French classes already soon. I am opening it up to our world language, um, teachers first at this point. Um, I do have, um, at least four chaperones from the world language department, um, that are interested. And it really depends on how many, um, students we have, so that, you know, to have the ratio from one to six, it really depends.
It's awesome. What an experience.
This has put some pressure on some other departments, I take it?
Oh, just a little bit.
Healthy pressure.
Healthy pressure, of course. Of course, healthy pressure.
Any remaining questions?
I just had a quick question. So on, on the what am I responsible for, it says passport and visa fees, but they don't need a visa?
They don't need a visa.
Okay.
This, um, part of this slideshow was, um, created by passports themselves. I'm not really sure if they have a visa.
Oh, if they went to like Brazil or something, yeah.
They won't be still working for a while. Maybe they might want to, but just the passport, I guess. Yeah.
All right. Move a motion, I believe?
Well, yes, without any further ado, I'm pleased to be able to move. School committee approved the high school trip to Paris, France and Barcelona, Spain from April fourteen, twenty-twenty-three to April twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed?
All right. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. It's nice seeing you all. Thank you. Thanks very much. Au revoir. I'm taking down anything here, too.
Next, we'd like to welcome Rosie Galvin up to the table and she's gonna do, um, an update on special education. Thank you, Rosie.
Yeah, thanks for having me, everyone. I'm going to, um, I think Doug usually gives me the same feedback as Chrissy Loftus in terms of talking too fast. So I'm going to try to not do that, um, even though I think that's just my natural state. Um, but no, I appreciate you having me here today. I'm happy to give some updates about special education, particularly being new here in this role and in this district. So I'm excited to kind of go through, um, an overview of programs we have and just stats in terms of giving you guys a good picture of what the special education landscape looks like in Wakefield Public Schools. Um, and then the rest of the goals really of my talking points are just kind of talking about my transition in, in terms of what I've learned and how that's kind of set us up for a vision and, and plans we have moving forward in terms of improving programming. Um, and then I have a couple of updates in terms of, uh, special education audit that's coming up and then a, a quick plug for CPAC. Um, so it's kind of the brief agenda for today, which is on the first line that I just went over. Um, you can move on to the next one, whoever's doing this. Uh, so great. So I thought it would be helpful to kind of go over so you have a good picture, like I said, of the, the students with disabilities who qualify for special education services district-wide. So right now for this year, currently, we have seventeen-point-six percent of our population, which is about six-hundred-and-forty students who qualify for IEPs. A vast majority of those are, are students who are in district. Small number, thirty of those are students currently who we have in out-of-district programming. Um, and then there's a couple other kind of scattered in there in terms of students who are privately placed or, um, you know, really young kids who have services only through the Doyle School. And I also thought it'd be helpful to show where these students are in terms of placements. So on every IEP, there's a placement page and it, it shows if a student, what program or placement they're in. So looking at our six through twenty-one-year-old students, um, the vast majority of them are in the full inclusion classroom, so seventy-seven-point-six percent. Um, and full inclusion meaning they're, they're in their general education classroom with peers, um, at least eighty percent of their school day. And then obviously those numbers decrease quite a bit. Um, we have just under twelve percent of students in partial inclusion, meaning that at least sixty percent of their school day is in the general education classroom and they may be receiving services in special education for the other portion of that day. And then we have a small number of students, uh, just under six percent who are in substantially separate programming. Uh, this means that they're receiving the vast majority of services outside of the general education classroom. So, uh, more than sixty percent of their day uh, is outside of the classroom. So I say that because I'll dive more into particular programs in the next slide and I thought that might be a good overview in terms of just knowing different types of placements and, and seeing where students are holistically district-wide in terms of those numbers.
Just to clarify, Rosie, so the, the breakout around full inclusion, partial inclusion and substantially separate, those percentages are percentages of the seventeen-point-six percent, correct?
Correct, yes. And it's actually, that doesn't add up to one-hundred for those of you who are doing the math, because it's only, um, students who are six through twenty-one years old. So that's missing students who are, uh, Doyle and pre-K. But yes, thank you for clarifying. Um, so in terms of disability category, most of our students, again, of the seventeen-point-six percent, qualify under the disability category of a specific learning disability. Um, so there's thirteen different disability categories a student will qualify under in Massachusetts. And our numbers here in Wakefield align to state averages. Specific learning disability is, is the highest percentage of students in Massachusetts. So we're, we're in alignment there. I just wanna, just, I say this because we are starting to do, uh, a special education dashboard and some of these indicators are what we want to look at in terms of, you know, over a period of five years and, and seeing trends for particular indicators that we find important. So I'm working with special education coordinators to solidify what those indicators are so that we can continually go back and look at the, the stats that we find important and it will help us to be able to determine trends and therefore make some decisions, um, that could impact programming, how we're funding, uh, where we want to target money and things like that. So I'm happy to, I originally had some screenshots of that dashboard on here and took those off in order to not overwhelm with, with information, but I am happy to, to sit with any of you and share that more in depth. That's something that you're, you're interested in looking at. We have, uh, indicators on there in terms of, you know, assessment data, looking at how students are performing in terms of SATs and MCAS, their participation in AP courses, and really looking to disaggregate that data to see how students with disabilities in the district are performing in comparison to gen ed peers as well. And also on that dashboard, we have other indicators like, uh, kind of internal data in terms of number of referrals in a given year that we have and of those initial referrals, how many of them are, are eligible for special education services. So I say all of that, not to bore you, but just to say that it really is important for us to be able to use this data to drive decision-making. Uh, and like I said, it's, it's a lot of the conversations you've had here already in terms of implications for budget, um, and indicators like that, that, that we'll use through the dashboard as well. So next, um, I thought it would be helpful, especially because I know you are all, you have plans to go visit each school and maybe this will be a good overview so you can, uh, know about the programs within our schools, especially ahead of your upcoming visits. So I'll go into, like I mentioned on that first page, the kind of distribution of students who are in full inclusion versus partial versus substantially separate. And I'll talk specifically about the programs at each school that, uh, these fall under. So starting off, uh, with the Doyle, that's full inclusive program. So there's students with disabilities, uh, in a classroom with gen ed peers and the teacher is duly certified. They're a general education teacher and they also have their special education certification. Uh, and then also at the Doyle, we have one substantially separate classroom this year, mostly students who, um, fall under the ASD diagnosis, autism spectrum disorder or developmental delay. Um, so I'll just touch briefly on kind of the student profile in each of these. You have a general sense and then, um, some program descriptions about each of one as well. So moving down to Greenwood Elementary, we have one specialized program there, which is the language-based program. So the profile of student here is really average to high-average IQ, um, with specific learning disabilities in reading. Um, these students have dyslexia and they really need more specialized instruction, uh, in terms of reading. And so that program is supported by one special education teacher and two paraprofessionals. The students are getting kind of small group instruction in reading and writing outside of their classroom. And then they have push and support from the paraprofessionals and/or the special education teacher, um, really using that language-based model. And to these, a lot of these, we have equivalent programs already at the older grades. I'll touch less on kind of the description and the profile because they match. And I'll just talk about how students are when they transition from school to school. Moving over to Woodville, we have one specialized program there and I know you just, or some of you just visited this past week. Um, so we have the staff program, which is really for students who require more social, emotional or behavioral support. And it is supported by two special education teachers and two paraprofessionals. And they're really working on, um, you know, developing behavior intervention plans for students that need them, consulting with classroom teachers, um, in terms of the implementation of those behavior plans, uh, focusing on kind of teaching students social, emotional skills. Couple more at the elementary level. We have Dolbeer. Um, I put these in parentheses, medically fragile and ASD, because we are working on not calling them that anymore and actually having names for these programs instead of, you know, identifying them by the, the disability label of students who make up those classrooms. So more to come on that, but the coordinators, the special coordinators and I are starting to brainstorm of some good acronyms and new names for these rooms that will then, um, talk to special education teachers about and get input before formally changing that. So more to come there, but that's why they're in parentheses. And so for the medically fragile, we have, um, small group of students, mostly with kind of neurological impairments, students with intellectual disabilities, um, and they have a highly modified curriculum. A lot of these students have a one-on-one aid in addition to the classroom teacher who, um, is teaching them in that room. And then the last one at the elementary level is the quote-unquote ASD classrooms. Um, they're split into two. So we have a K through two classroom and then a three and four grade classroom. So there's a special education teacher that supports each of those and students in that program. A lot of them have one-to-one aids, um, and there's also shared paraprofessionals dedicated to the program to support as well. Am I talking too fast? All right. Um, so finishing up on some of these, uh, some specialized programs at the Galvin, like I mentioned, the same profile of kids, kind of average to high-average IQ, students with dyslexia, learning disabilities. Um, the, the students from Greenwood would funnel up into the language-based program at the Galvin. So I know you guys have talked about in other school committee meetings, Doug had mentioned last week that the plan is to continually expand this program. Right now, there's not students in the eighth grade who are in the language-based program, but of course, our current seventh graders will be eighth graders next year and we're looking to make sure that we're, um, we have that continuum of services for them, um, for the language-based students. So again, those kiddos are receiving small group instruction in ELA outside the gen ed classroom, and then they push in with the support of special education teachers, really with kind of a cohesive language-based model, um, into math and social studies and science. Couple others at the Galvin that I'll mention, TLC is the kind of stack equivalent that I had talked about. Those students who really need more social, emotional, behavioral support. A lot of the, the students from STACK who still require that at the Galvin transition, receive that through TLC. So that's supported by two special education teachers and two paraprofessionals. And it's really flexible, again, focused on kind of supporting students socially, emotionally, behaviorally. And, um, there's kind of a room dedicated where they can go to, to help with de-escalation or if they need a quiet space in a smaller environment. So we have that TLC program that's kind of the equivalent to STACK. Couple others at Galvin, um, we have Compass, which I know, um, a lot of these names, we're trying to move away from saying, obviously, like I mentioned, medically fragile, ASD. I think this, people might more traditionally refer to this as life skills, uh, or sometimes we're naming programs by the amazing teachers who are in them as program. Um, Bev is the, the specialized teacher who's great and who, who works in that program. So this is, the, the student profile is mostly students with intellectual impairment and ASD. Again, they're receiving most of their instruction outside the gen ed classroom and there's lots of opportunities for inclusion support throughout the day as well, uh, with support from, from paraprofessionals. And then, um, I know that you've had this conversation in terms of budget and planning for next year, but we have, uh, there's a lot of students from the Dolbeer right now in the medically fragile and ASD programs who are fourth graders and they're transitioning to fifth grade next year. So traditionally, we, we don't currently have programming at the Galvin for these last two, but we're looking to, again, make sure that we have a continuum of support for these students so that we can service them, um, well in district. students so that we can service them well in district. Going over to the high school, we have PAL program. This, again, is kind of the TLC equivalent. So STACK, TLC, PAL at the high school equivalent. This is supported by one special education teacher and one school adjustment counselor. And again, it's really supporting students who need more specialized support socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. And then one more at the high school is called the School to Life Program, which is the Compass equivalent. A lot of students who are in Compass at Galvin will move up to the School to Life Program at the high school. And it really is a highly modified curriculum focused on kind of pre-vocational skills, activities of daily living. They have some opportunities to explore school job-related opportunities to kind of look at potential areas of interest as well. And then the last one is POST, last but not least. We have our POST program, and this is for students with moderate to severe disabilities who are between ages 18 and 22. So they either haven't received their high school diploma, or they haven't met their transition goals. And so it's really focused, again, highly individualized instruction, and there's a lot of community involvement. That's a real integral part of POST, where these students, four times a week, are in internships at various places within the community. And for that program, there's two specialty teachers and one job coach to help support with that internship aspect as well. All right. So the next slide, so I thought, you know, it would be helpful to kind of give that overview because I want to talk about my transition into this role. And like I mentioned, I'm obviously new to this district and new to this role. And so, you know, I want to kind of tie into next the vision that I have and based on the things that I've learned and kind of my focus for this year. So I think by, obviously by virtue of being new in general, my goal for this year was to really learn about how this district works, how special education within this district works. And I think it's, you would agree, it's a particularly unique year, I think, coming off of COVID, where there was a lot of hybrid learning, or, you know, kids in quarantine and just disruption. And so I think it was particularly important to kind of have that point of view coming in for this year as well. And so I'll touch on a few things that I think I learned within this kind of transition of trying to acquire as much information as I can, because I think it ties nicely into some indicators that I'll talk about in terms of special education indicators and planning. So I'll highlight some of these briefly, which I know you all know, but, you know, I think one thing that I quickly learned is that we have really strong teams here, and we have really solid foundations in terms of structures in place. And, you know, especially during the pandemic, when I know it was a big focus of the district to focus particularly on students with disabilities and ensuring that we, they're in schools, they're learning as much as they can, and given, you know, the disruption of the pandemic that their schooling is disrupted as little as possible. So I just want to highlight quickly kind of the WIN structure, which I know we've talked about, especially in our subcommittee meetings. And in terms of it being just a really proactive approach, we have had conversations with the elementary principals who are all really aligned in terms of wanting to make sure that we're not just focusing on reading intervention, but especially for next year, we're making sure that the budget is allowing us to allocate for math interventionists as well. So I think that's one thing that I will highlight. Another is the PD plan. So based on, you know, learning about how things have been historically, it's my understanding that this year we've had more highly individualized and structured PD than we have in the past, which I think obviously has allowed for faculty members in different roles to get really specialized instruction to help increase student outcomes. And then the last one really, or two more, the COVID teachers, which you know, obviously allowed for the continuation for students to learn who are in quarantine. And then we've also been talking a lot, or you guys have been, in terms of counseling and kind of the proactive approach that we had in terms of using the grant-funded positions to have two more school adjustment counselors, one at the Galvin and one at the high school, which I know is part of the proposed budget to continue that based on the increased needs of services that we're seeing. So I think, you know, I say all of this because I think that when you have strong teams and when we have strong structures, we can see improved outcomes. And for me, looking through the special education lens, you know, I really think that special education is only as strong as its Gen Ed counterpart. And so we're able to see some kind of positive effects by looking at holistic special education data based on these strong teams and these strong programs. And so I'll mention a couple of them before tying that into kind of vision and thoughts for moving forward. So based on that, kind of some quick specialty data that is highlighted for me, on the first slide, when I shared the statistics of special education students district-wide, I mentioned that there's, currently we have 17.6% of our student body has an IEP. And that number has really stayed consistent over the last five years, even given COVID and kind of an increase in referrals or disrupted schooling. I think that that points to these proactive approaches in terms of interventions that we've been having to kind of decrease the likelihood of kind of inappropriate referrals to special education or early referrals to special education. And it really does speak to the good job that special education teams are doing at determining eligibility, because sometimes it can be kind of hard, especially now, to ascertain, is it really a specific learning disability that the student has, or is it effects of COVID and disruption in schooling? And so I think just looking at our five years of data that we have, and our numbers staying really consistent and in line with state averages, I think that that's a positive point to mention. I mentioned this before too at the beginning, our out-of-district numbers are low in comparison to other districts. You know, I'm part of special education directors' job-alikes, and we come together often and talk about kind of problems of practice and share data. And so we're at about 4.6% of our students with disabilities being out of district. Other numbers are really hovering around 7, almost 8%, and we're lower than the state average as well. So I think that that's something positive to highlight, and also kind of ties back to other conversations you guys have had in terms of, you know, making sure that we really have robust programming in district to support, to support all students. And then the last one that I'll point out in terms of kind of that special education data that ties into, you know, these strong teams and these strong programs is that our referral numbers, again, in comparison to other districts, is a lot lower. It's pretty consistent over the years, again, even given COVID. So in a lot of other districts, we see a huge increase in kind of referral numbers. That's not necessarily the case for us. It is a little bit, and they were kind of, they came more, and inflows at the same time versus spread out. But I think I just wanted to highlight those as kind of positives in terms of, you know, what I've learned in my transition in and kind of tying it to special education numbers. So I wanted to talk about all of, you know, those strong teams and those strong programings because I really think that, based on me being here for not much time at all, but we're really at the point where we can kind of capitalize on these strong teams and strong systems in place in order to really improve upon, you know, special education processes and systems that we have in place already. And so this first bullet is really taken right from the budget that Cara, Doug, and Christine talked about last week, because, you know, it really is looking, like I said, at continuing to refine and develop our in-district programming. And the special education teams that I've touched base about, looking especially at the budget, really feel confident that it would give us the opportunity to serve kids that, you know, based on the needs that we know that we have at this time. And like I had mentioned before, like those program shifts, the kids who are currently in Dolbeer, medically fragile and ASD, they're moving up. So we need to make sure that we're supporting these students. And, you know, for me, it's really important that families who are watching or hearing know that we're really thinking about that, and we're planning ahead of time to ensure that we have strong programming for their kids as they're moving up. So one thing I've talked about already is kind of that data-driven approach that I was talking about with the dashboard. And another kind of main philosophy is really making sure that the decisions that I want to make or that we're making are data-driven but also student-centered. And I, you know, I think this ties nicely into the third bullet as well in terms of really making sure that we're prioritizing relationships with families and building trust, because I think it's a lot easier to build trust and a solid relationship with the family if they know that, you know, decisions you're making are student-centered as well. So I just wanted to highlight that. Almost done. Lastly, for this, for this page, I, you know, Doug, Cara, and I have really, in addition to the special education coordinators, you know, talking about these goals, talking about the philosophy in terms of student-centered, data-driven, we've really been framing kind of achieving these goals through conversations with teams that are focused on this process down at the bottom. We're really first looking at creating high-quality IEPs that then, you know, that includes probably identifying students, that includes identifying the right accommodations and modifications they need, writing the right service grids in order to meet their needs. So the framing that we've had with teams is that we need to first focus on IEP writing. And if we do that, then that will allow those IEPs to dictate programming, and then will allow the programming to drive scheduling and other decision-making. And so I think it's a little shift in terms of making sure, again, we're going to that student-centered approach instead of saying, this is the model that we have, and we're fitting students into it, to look at it of, this is what a kid needs. I know it because it says it in this IEP. We created this based on their individual needs. That drives programming, and then that drives decision-making. And so I'll just touch briefly, I mean, I think it has implications, we've been talking about especially at the high school level, kind of implications for class sizes and assignments, kind of representation in those classes as well, to make it more manageable and produce better outcomes for students. Okay, so next, I wanted to just kind of talk about, based on that vision and where we're going, some initiatives that we've started this year and we plan to build on. So like I've mentioned, we have highly individualized PD based on faculty's roles. And so the eight Wednesday half-days, I just put a screenshot here so you can see kind of a description of the focus areas. This is for high school special education teachers and what the focus areas were for each of their Wednesday half-days so far. So you can see that we really, you know, I thought it'd be important to have this series that's dedicated to IEP development and looking at really breaking apart each section of the IEP, providing teachers and IEP teams with good resources, especially driven by DESI resources and Wakefield examples, and really having one centralized place where we can add all of these resources for teachers that they can use in terms of developing IEPs, to go back to that kind of sequence that we're talking about. And just to touch briefly on, you know, next year, I think it's great that we already have this highly individualized PD, and even for myself, when I was planning it over the summer, I have ideas for how to change that for next year. I mean, I want to be even more individualized. So for example, instead of having all special education teachers together, we could be breaking it apart by programs that I talked about in the beginning. So maybe we have, you know, the STACK, the TLC, the PAL folks together who are servicing students with social, emotional needs, and they can have PD sessions that are focused on that versus being with all the special education teachers district-wide. And, you know, I'd love to look more into contracting out to get some consultants in who are experts in these particular programs. We're doing that already for the language-based program, where we're consulting with Landmark Outreach and have a great consultant, Ann Larson, who comes in and works with the language-based special education teachers. So for next year, in terms of kind of looking ahead, I would love to expand that more into other specialized programs, especially for the students in substantially separate programs. All right. A couple other things. I just wanted to give an FYI in terms of tiered focus monitoring. So for folks, and we can go to the next slide. Okay. I don't know if anyone knows what this is, or it was formerly called Coordinated Program Review, if that rings a bell, but basically, we are up for our special education audit, and so the teams are working hard at planning for that. So it's really a three-step process. The first one is, we have a self-assessment that's due this May that we're working on, and it encompasses special education and civil rights documentation, so making sure, based on the indicators that the state is looking for, that we have policies and procedures written, and we upload it into an online system, and we do a file review of our files as well. And then in the spring of next academic year, the state, they come and they do the onsite visit. So that'll include, you know, interviews with various stakeholders, they come in and they review our student records, and then there's input from families as well that, I'll share more, I'm happy to share more of this information if you're interested in hearing about this tiered focus monitoring review as it comes up. Lastly, I wanted to just do a plug for CPAC. Thank you to Mike, who is now the liaison for our CPAC. I know that the CPAC leaders really appreciate it, and Chrissy and Chris, Chrissy who was here before, who also talks fast, is one of the leaders. And, you know, I just wanted to put this on here because they really have a goal of creating events for families in terms of networking and also informative. I put some events that we've already had so far this year. There was a meet-and-greet with me in September, and then lots of informative ones like basic rights, special education mediation, understanding the IEP. We had a panel with other folks there from Wakefield as well. So this is really just a plug for any families out there who are listening to please, you know, email, sign up for the email list. And, you know, it's a community of people who have been through the same process, and I know that they're eager to share and to collaborate. So thank you, Mike, for being the liaison, and for all of them for the hard work. So I just wanted to plug that. And then really the last one before I'm happy to answer any questions is my own plug for my Calendly link. So I, you know, part of my goal is I really want to be responsive and collaborative and accessible, and so please, if I notice a lot of information in a short period of time, if any of you are interested in meeting with me to look at the data dashboard or do anything, please reach out. It doesn't have to be through Calendly, but I just want to put this out there. There's a link at the bottom, my email address for any family, if you want to talk about your child, any teacher, if you want to talk about something, please use that, or please just email me, and I'm happy to.
So can you share what this does?
Oh yeah, sure. So you just go, it's just a website where they'll go on to, it's already linked to my calendar, so no time will show up if I don't actually have the time available. So if someone wanted to come in, it's automatically synced to mine, and they can just look through the dates and times and make their own appointment with me, basically, and they can pick what it is. It could be in my office, it could be a phone call, it could be a Google Meet, and they can just independently set it up. They're for half-hour sessions, but if you wanted longer ones, you can just book back-to-back. And it just does it for you. And then I will automatically get an email saying that that's a calendar, that's an event in my calendar.
I have a question and a comment. So have you been here a year now?
Almost.
Almost a year?
Eight-ish months.
So I've asked Doug this question so many times, his head's probably going to explode, but, so COVID was like no other time for anybody here, but I always kind of look at the silver lining of, what did you, what have you learned during a COVID era that you think in some way could transition to post-COVID that you wouldn't have thought of perhaps before?
Yeah, I mean, I think an easy one is Zoom meetings. I think it's a, it's a great way to just connect with families. I think oftentimes, especially for IEP meetings, it might have been difficult to get off work or come in, and I think just like family accessibility to that end has been really helpful. And then I think there's other positives, like kids were on computers a lot, I think they're a lot better at using computers. But yeah, I think, I think that that's one kind of easy thing, and we have IEP meetings all the time, so even a quick progress update, I think it's easier to that in that regard of meeting with families.
Great. So you gave me a plug, so I'm going to return the favor here. So Rosie sits on our Student Services Subcommittee, has a permanent member with Amy and Amy as well. Obviously, she sits on CPAC now as well, with me as well. And, you know, you've been a wonderful addition to our district, there's no doubt about that, the energy you bring, the perspective you bring, so it's great to have you here, Rosie. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Any questions for Rosie?
Do you foresee any organizational changes as far as resources? I know there's still an open, right, Barbara's position hasn't been backfilled yet. So do you foresee any of that special education coordinator role, or any kind of like teachers, some teachers help go to other school and help other teachers? Just didn't know if you had any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think to your first point about the, particularly the elementary special education coordinator role, historically, it's been the, we had the assistant principal at the two large elementary schools, Woodville and Dolbeer, who do the special education coordinator work at those schools, and then the elementary special education coordinator was doing that work at the two small elementary schools, Walton and Greenwood. And so one thought that I will definitely implement in terms of whoever's taking over that new role is that instead of just being, doing that work at the small elementary schools, that they're doing it across the district in terms of all four elementary schools. I think there's a lot of benefits to that, especially, you know, as we're talking about programming and developing programming and making good decisions for kids at the point of the initial eligibility meeting, that we have one consistent person who really knows those programs well, who's leading initial evaluation meetings across all four elementary schools. I think the role has capacity to do it, and I think there's a lot of benefits in terms of consistency, especially in regard to programming. So that's one example that, yes, I certainly would like to implement.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
Just kudos for throwing your Calendly out there, because that's, I am loathe to give people direct access to my calendar, it fills up so quickly, but so, so kudos to making yourself so reachable, that's a, that's a big, a big thing. One other thing I heard that I liked was when you said that you were doing professional development, looking to sort of stack the sort of different methods. I saw that as you implementing WIN for your own PD, and I thought that was awesome. I'm curious about what I saw come out of sort of COVID and a lot of parent stories was that as they saw their children fall behind and they ran into some, some issues, traditionally, you know, like dyslexia or whatever, and they were looking for IEPs, there seemed to be a large backlog of trying to get those looking for IEPs, there seemed to be a large backlog of trying to get those services out to those parents. And so in terms of, is that something that you had seen when you came on board? And how has it been to sort of work through that? Are we in a good place? Do we feel like we're sort of caught up, or it's something that we're working on?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember back that far when I first started. There certainly wasn't a backlog of trying to get services. We had some instances, I'm remembering, where, you know, someone was on maternity leave, like RBCBA, for example, and we did have a somewhat backlog of kids who needed kind of consultation, or teachers who needed consultation with the BCBA for students who had behavior plans in their classroom, for example. So that was one example. But there wasn't, no, there wasn't a big backlog of kind of services, to my knowledge, that weren't being implemented. We certainly did see kind of an increase in referrals this year, particularly, a slight increase, particularly parent-initiated referrals, to your point of maybe parents who are concerned about maybe how their student is progressing. So we did see that. But we've had good luck in terms of contracting out to most degrees or school-based teams being able to do that and implement services. Outside of kind of an example of, you know, someone on maternity leave and trying to find it. It was certainly harder at the beginning of this academic year to try to get some outside services because everyone was, all districts were trying to do it, and it was harder to find. But nothing, nothing too extensive, no.
Great, good.
I have one other thing, sorry. What I've noticed, like, for the programming at the elementary level, I always, well, not always, I've heard stories where, you know, at kindergarten, you might not see, say, a reading disability. But then in second grade, if you're not at the Greenwood already, they're like, you should really move to the Greenwood. And I didn't know if there was a way that we could, now that dyslexia screening is going to be implemented in kindergarten, I think, just so there's not an interruption in the social setting. That and then looking at, and I'm glad that it's going to be built up at the middle school, but then I didn't see anything at the high school. Like, what happens to those kids?
Yes. Yeah. So we'll continue to build it as those kids get older and move on to the next grade level. We're actually preemptively talking, I mentioned, we were contracting with Landmark Outreach, and although we only have current seventh graders, who are moving up to eighth, we're already talking about what their plans are for the high school and in terms of what their transition could look like. Kind of with the idea of as they have, you know, increased intensity of intervention, especially if we catch them early, and they have time at Greenwood, they'll need less and less time kind of outside of the general classroom as they get into Galvin. And then looking, we're having conversations about what that could look like for the ninth grade in terms of maybe, you know, keeping those kiddos in their own cohort, they're in an English class together, and then they have kind of academic support through the language-based model as well as in the high school. So we are talking about that. And yes, certainly, we want to have a continuum for students as they get older.
I do like that cohort model, especially if you're like, keeping like kids together. I know we talk about inclusion, and you don't want to overwhelm a teacher, but I also see a benefit as far as servicing certain students that have the same, you know, complexities together.
Yeah, exactly. And I think we intentionally are trying not to say, especially for the students in the language-based program, not saying co-taught classes. So those are the students who are in a small group setting for ELA, for reading and writing. And then we intentionally don't say that they travel to co-taught classes as a cohort because that would imply that there's other students with disabilities also sitting in that same room, when that's not the case. They're traveling as a language-based cohort, and they're the only students with disabilities to keep that kind of same profile peer. So, yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
So thank you, Rosie, and congratulations on your first year, or near your first year, anyways. It has been, I'm sure, a heck of a first year to be a first-year special ed director, too. So thank you for all the work. A couple of questions around Doyle and the kindergarten transition piece. Could you speak a little bit about what Doyle looks like? Could you break it down a bit? What are the, you know, what are the peers? What are some of the ratios? What are some of the greater, greatest needs at Doyle, both now and what you might be thinking for next year? And how is the kindergarten screening going for what also next year might look like?
Yeah. So, yeah, in terms of the Doyle, talking with Shannon, looking at, and Kara might be able to speak better about like, what that looked like last year. But based on my conversations with Shannon, I think kind of another positive to Mike's point in the beginning of COVID was really making sure, there was like a push to have more inclusion almost at the Doyle level. And so in the past, I think we had more than one substantially separate classroom at that level. And in talking with Shannon, who's the principal of the Doyle, she found that one positive was like, the smaller classes that we had allowed students who might traditionally be in a substantially separate setting to be pushing more into integrated classrooms, and they had success there. So I think to name another positive and kind of what the profile looks like of students at Doyle right now, in terms of kind of the ratio or student profile that you had mentioned, I think I'm getting these numbers right. If you have a classroom of 20 students, then there can only be five of them as students with disabilities. And then if you go up one to six students with disabilities, then the max classroom size can be 15. So obviously, you know, Shannon is working within those parameters in terms of being in compliance for the ratio of students with disabilities to without. And like, your other part of the question, in terms of profile of students, it's always changing, obviously. Sometimes we have a move-in, and there's a new student that we need to kind of account for and make sure that they have robust programming. So right now, based on the profile of students there, there's only one substantially separate classroom, and then we're able to have nine integrated classrooms as well. But some years, it's too substantially separate. So it really just depends on the students that come in. And we're really looking at looking, you know, collaborating well with elementary schools of where those kids are going to next year, and doing the same at the elementary level into fifth grade, so that, you know, we have good groupings for kids, we're making right decisions in terms of programming for them. So that's a big conversation as well. So I hit all the points of your question, I feel like.
You did. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
The comment that kind of stuck out at me was your goal of being student-centered and data-driven. I think special ed is an emotional topic, right? It's a hard one. And I think to focus on being data-driven, but also focused on the student, and I love your, build the IEP plan for what the kid needs, and then we'll figure out programming, and then we'll figure out scheduling, is really feels like the right, kind of the right way to go with this. So this was really, I have, I don't know that I've ever sat through such an informative special ed update. So really appreciate it. It was good to hear from you.
Thanks so much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rosie.
May I sit down, Rosie? So before I move on, I just want to highlight some of the comments that Rosie made. You know, one is this notion of learning, right? And so you can't be in the role of a special education director, or really almost any administrative role, or teaching role right now, if you're not learning. You know, Rosie talked about what I learned, right, and what she is learning, right? And so it's arguably the greatest skill that administrators need to have and need to acquire if you're not only going to survive, but thrive in a space, right? And this notion of also talking about a team, right? And you'll hear in the presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about goals in a moment, but this notion of, you know, instructional strategy number one, you know, hiring, retaining and developing talent, you know, and we've used teachers in that space. But the same goes for administrators, right? The same goes for administrators. You know, we hired Rosie during COVID, right? The fact that we found someone so talented during COVID is amazing. You know, Brian Schmidt was hired during COVID, you know, and we're seeing what these leaders are, kind of the spaces that they're going into and how they're presenting themselves. I think it really speaks volumes to the talent they have, but also kind of the group that is starting to be present here in the district. I feel like we can't talk about that enough. The people make the place, right? And not only do the people make the place, it also kind of generates outcomes for adults and for kids and students and families, right? So we'll talk more about that. So I have about, you know, 10 slides in a deck. These are, these goals you've already seen, you've already seen before. I just want to give a quick update. We're at about the mid-year point, or actually, just beyond the mid-year, 90 days, I'm calling the mid-year. We're probably at 102, 103, when we were at our school visit at Woodville the other day. We saw the 100th Day celebration that was had there. And I'll say more about our visit to Woodville at the end of my comments. But I would just like to give a quick update in terms of where we are. So the first goal, now, this is in addition to the instructional strategy goals that we talked about, right? And so in terms of superintendent goal, we had talked about prioritizing standards-based instructional practices that engage to meet diverse needs of all kids. So when I talk about diverse needs, and Rosie talks about diverse needs, they're the same needs. When I talk about intervention, you know, in years past, when we talked about intervention services, it was only for special education students. That has now changed, right? And when Rosie talks about it, it's the same thing, right? Because a student comes with an IEP that entitles them to certain services, it doesn't mean that we will pay attention to someone's success differently if they don't come with an IEP or a 504. So that's a really important piece. So the instructional practices will promote academics, social, emotional, and equitable outcomes for students, equitable outcomes. So, you know, if you think about equitable, what does that mean, right? And so equity is a term that's thrown around quite a bit. You know, I think it scares some people. People think about equity, diversity, and inclusion. I think that work can be lumped into certain areas, and I think it can put people back on their heels. When we talk about equitable outcomes, I'm specifically talking about, you know, changing the narrative around outcomes for kids. No matter who you are, students should have an opportunity to have success and to have a positive outcome. That's what I mean by equitable outcomes. And that has nothing to do with what the input is on the front side. It's not a conditional statement meaning only students of certain academic backgrounds, okay, will have success. We expect all students to grow, be better, and have success. It is something that we're committed to in this goal. So just quickly, progress that we're making in this space. So on the left, in the box that you see on the left in the slide, in this area, this connects directly to the superintendent's evaluation rubric, right? So you'll be able to see for instruction B, or, and then you'll see one D. And so you'll be able to, when you do my evaluation at the end of the year, you will be able to make reference to these. And we, just for full disclosure, we will have kind of an end-of-year summary. So you're not going to have to think, oh, my goodness, what did we talk about? What progress has made? We'll have a summary at that point as well. But I'd just like to talk about kind of some of the instructional curriculum progress that we're making here. In regard to the math curriculum, we're into the implementation phase, and we've adapted because of COVID, and we are extending the professional development that we started this year that we normally would have concluded in one year. We're extending that into next year to make sure that we are, it's like no stone unturned, and we're doing everything that we can do to implement our new curriculum that we've adopted, and to make sure that we're supporting people, people, supporting teachers to have, to set them up to create positive outcomes for kids. Rosie alluded to the professional development that's happening. This is a hyperlink, and I'll provide these slides to you. I already have. So this is a hyperlink. So you will see a professional development plan. And in that plan, you will see dates, you know, except for next year, right? And in that plan, that's the exact same snapshot that Rosie shared on her slides. So what you're starting to see now is this triangulation. So Kara's job is not separate from my job, is not separate from Rosie's job, right? So we're supporting one another. So when we talk about team, one's success is directly related to the other person's success. So that reference there relates to the new professional development, the plan that has been developed. In regard to curriculum coordination and expectations around common scope and sequence. So what COVID has brought us is it has made all of our work very public. And in year one of COVID, what we really were able to do at the elementary level is to make sure that an academic experience that you were having in grade one at Walton was the same as Dolbear, was the same as Woodville, was the same as Greenwood. Plus minus. When I say plus minus, the teachers make it their own. The teachers have different styles, but everyone was using the same materials. Everyone is on a similar timeline, not exactly the same. It's not lockstep, right? There's latitude for teachers to use their own discretion, to kind of speed up, to slow down, based on the students who are in front of them. And that's exactly what we want them to do, right? But we also, you know, don't want them to go so far astray that the students are having a different experience if they're going to have similar assessments at the end, right? And so that's something that's important. In regard to monitoring student achievement and data, you know, the work that Rosie has done with her dashboard directly contributes to this, right? The notion of us now being able to do a deep dive and look at data and also adapt, I urge all of you to take a look at the data dashboard and the spreadsheets that Rosie is creating that are, I think that there's a little visual basic happening here with the, so you'll see, within the spreadsheets that Rosie's creating, you'll see graphs and cells. And I know, Stephen, I can see you smiling through your mask, because you know what I'm talking about, right? And so you'll see, like, trend lines in cells that are kind of happening real time, right? So they're adjusting. And so that, we're really trying to push into a space to be, and I think you pointed this out, Susie, to be student-centered, but to be able to verify and have data inform the decisions that we're making. And so that's a critical piece in regard to the instructional practices and curriculum resources that we're using as well. Tiered support for targeted differentiated instruction. And so this notion of, you know, tiered support is really just trying to think broadly about how do we do it? You know, the old ways of doing things, you know, ah, we don't have much time in the day, so we can't do it. That's not an excuse any longer. We're talking about looking vertically at the day. What can we push in a Wakefield Academy? What unique programming can we develop there? What can we include in the summer? We talk about, you know, we use the term acceleration academies. We use that term because it's mostly related to grant funding, but it's really about giving students a head start. You know, if we're able to get grant funding, whether we are or we aren't, I think we are committed to this notion of bringing our K kids in early to have a soft opening, to give teachers smaller groups of students to work with, so that they have success with their students earlier. So it doesn't take them two weeks or three weeks just to work on classroom routines. They're getting to know the kids early. You know, on the acceleration academy, I was at Walton one day, and the week ended, and this is a highlight for me, one of many highlights for the year, but there was a kindergarten student devastated, sobbing at the end of the week. I didn't know what was wrong. I was really concerned. He just didn't want the week to end. Didn't want to go home, didn't want the week to end. Really good problems to have. And so, but that is, you know, so what we did on the administrative side, we all have a role in this, right? So our role, Kara's role, my role, is to secure the funds, get the resources, right? Apply for the grant, apply for it in a way that can comply with the expectation of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and then recruit the daylights out of the program and get our teachers here, and then let it go, right? And so that, I would argue, was one of our greatest successes that will continue, but more to follow there. In terms of planning stage for ELA curriculum, so we're entering, you know, we're in the stages where we're really starting to plan our curriculum cycle for English Language Arts. So more to follow there. We're going to continue to analyze the impact and update it of our supervision evaluation system. I'll be honest with you, if nothing else, this notion of public, public, kind of what we're doing is very public. One of the things that has showed itself is, you know, years ago, Wakefield was out ahead of everybody else in that Kim Smith worked really hard to adapt and lead a group of teachers. So this was a co-led group. There were teacher leaders and administrators. When the new supervision evaluation system came out, probably 10 years ago now, districts had a choice to take and create their own model, but it had to comply with the state, the state model had to comply with what the tenets and principles and structures were. So you could write your own of a supervision evaluation book based on the exemplar, or you could essentially adapt, which is what Wakefield did, or you could adopt one-for-one, which came out from the state. So, but what the state had, the advantage the state has, is they have teams of people at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed updating forms, creating different rubrics, creating different rubrics for different positions. So I think we are getting to the time where we need to look at the state model and really compare to the program that we adapted, hence the language adapted here, to the supervision, to the state model. And that's something that has to be negotiated with the teachers. So this isn't a standalone. We would work with teacher leaders on this, but more to follow. We would work with teacher leaders on this, but more to follow. And so just the district alignment of goals. And so I'll just jump right to it. So this is Cara's favorite slide. And, and you can see by the smile on her face that she's particularly pleased that not only is it kind of symmetric, but she's particularly pleased because...
I didn't create, I can't take credit for it. Lindsey and Val.
Lindsey and Val. But, but one of the things that we've done is, is, you know, these areas where we're talking about classroom practice, teacher professional practice goals and student learning goals. We, we've talked a little bit about, you know, the supervision evaluation process, whatever plan it is, adapted or adopted, is a, is a self-driven process where teachers create goals in this space, professional practice and student learning. But what administrators are working at with teachers collaboratively is just to work on areas based on students that they have in front of teachers. For example, an administrator might make the suggestion, Doug, I'd like you to focus next year on meeting the needs of diverse learners or meeting the needs of students on IEPs, just as a general, general topic. How you do that, how you create that goal, then is up to you, the individual teacher. So it's a co-created. So the, so the administrator might collaborate with the teacher. I might even start by asking the teacher, you know, what area would you like to focus on based on the students that you have in front of you? Or based on the, the work you did last year and the growth that you made, or an area of growth that you'd like to make, how might you do that work? And so, you know, this, this is kind of one of our highest leverage spaces that I think is really developing at a rate that I would argue it's, it's really being done well. And that's happening with teachers and principals. And so, but we also do supervision and do professional development with the principals in regard to supervision evaluation. But the work also aligns to the goals in our professional development plans and our district strategy. So Goal Two. Goal Two is, is really about building a new high school, working on our NEASC accreditation, and really looking at, at staffing and class size needs. So, you know, so there's four things within this goal in terms of progress that we're making in this area. So I shared earlier, this week is, is a week of a lot of deadlines. We've met every milestone with MSBA so far. We've met every milestone with MSBA so far. The PBC has been grumpy, but has been really exceptional partners in, in their grumpiness, right? Because I think that even when they're grumpy, they're fierce advocates for getting the town, and you're smiling because you know Chip is grumpy, right?
I'm saying nothing.
I know. Right? And so, but they, they're really exceptional partners for us. And on the, on the call we had last night, you know, Steve Mayo didn't need to be on the call. He just joined the call, right? PBC didn't need to be on the call, they just joined the call. So we have our OPM there, our architects are there. So we're, we're really kind of pushing forward into this space. And NEASC accreditation. So we have a year-long kind of goal to really work toward our NEASC accreditation. Our accreditation at the high school was downgraded due to the facility, okay? So NEASC still, does not allow you to disengage. You know, you still have to substantiate the progress that you're making in regard to your curriculum, in regard to using standards, in regard to looking at student outcomes and using data. And so Amy McLeod and her team, she has kind of three groups that she's working with. She has a steering committee, and she has some really just exceptional, exceptional teacher leaders that are working in this space around accreditation. So that's progressing. In terms of budget and staffing, you know, I think Christine and the budget book is an artifact of that work. You have that with you in terms of progress that we're making. Work with finance and facilities, the subcommittee. You know, Tim joins that call. We're almost meeting every week now. So, and on that call, you get an update from Christine. You get an update from Tim. And the work we're doing, Tim talks about capital in ways that we've never talked about capital before. So we're collaborating in that space. And again, I, I, I know I sound like a broken record, but I go back to the team, right? I go back to the team. And, and so that's, that's happening. Again, team building, hiring, recruiting, so I'll kind of leave that. So the, the third goal is packed. I don't think we could fit more words on this slide. And so we're just trying to minimize. So in, in our, in our mind, right, we think, okay, it's just a few slides. We'll just add more words to this slide, right? And so, so we'll, I'll try to be quick here with this. So, so in regard to the, the third goal is, is we want to just communicate the work, about the work that we're doing by doing things like having principals and students come to school committee, having Rosie come to school committee and talk about her work. But really trying to communicate. Thank you, Rosie, I appreciate it. And so, so communication is, is really critical in this time, you know? You've heard me say this. It's like we cannot communicate enough. And, and one of the biggest things that we talked about here was just the need for a new student management system. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that, Christine?
No, we're so excited. We've kicked it off with Power Schools, our new state-provided vendor. State's not paying for it, but they, they vetted the system. But it's really a fantastic system. We're pretty excited. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to go away from IPASS for probably the first quarter of the, of the fall. We have to overlap the two, but we're really going to have a lot of training over the summer and then our, can't wait to hear what the parents think. So more to follow on that. But we're really, for the next six months, it's really going to be a deep dive into Power School.
So again, the primary goal is, is to engage and support all members of the community by doing these following things, right? So it's like a theory of action. So the, the third bullet is really just looking at student needs in regard to counseling and student services. And I would argue that our student services subcommittee, you know, a year ago, if you look at the conversations, you don't have this context. But the conversations that were happening on that committee are not the same conversations that are happening now. The connection to CPAC is not the same as, as it is now. The idea that the Director of Special Education is a part of that subcommittee is a, is a huge, it's a, it's not a small gesture, not a small thing. But I feel like we're really progressing in, in so many areas, but these are just a, a few. So in regard to progress that we're making, and just kind of references again to the, the evaluation rubric. You know, progress that we're making, we've made a, a lot of progress in improving translation services. Right now, I want to say, I'm, I'm, I think the last, I took a look a week ago in preparation for this meeting. But we, I think, I want to say we have 91 or 92 students that require EL services. That means English is not their primary language, and they're entitled to English language services within the school day depending on the level proficient, level of English proficiency that they test at. You can be a Level 1, 2, or 3 and get two periods a day of, of English language support. Or you can be a Level 3, 4, or 5. There's an overlap in 3. It's not, I did repeat it. So you could be a Level 3, 4, and 5 and get one period of support a day. But that's specialized instruction. And so we've gone from, you know, two ESL teachers to three ESL teachers to now four ESL teachers, 4.5 ESL teachers. And so, and right now, we have, right now, we have...
103 students. It's gone up even more than the 92, yeah.
And so we have a .5. We, we were able to hire, Cara was able to hire, not me. Cara was able to hire a .5 ESL teacher. That, I can't think of a more difficult position to fill during this time. An ESL teacher, you cannot find them. And to hire someone for a .5 halftime position, next to impossible. And the gentleman that Cara was able to hire is thrilled to be here. Could not be at, like, feels like he just landed, do you know him?
I want to meet him though.
Yeah. He's super pleased to be here. And, you know, yeah, so maybe we can have...
Marty Navetta, yeah. He's a Wakefield dad.
You should invite them to one of the meetings.
Our, our ESL team has grown, and we have Colleen Anna as taking a lead as our ESL coordinator. She does a lot of the administrative things as well. So, you know, we could, I think, put a spotlight on ESL in the district. It has increased significantly, especially this year.
How many languages are we dealing with right now? Came up at Woodville.
You asked me that question, I need to look into it. Several, several. Spanish and Portuguese, I still believe are our top two.
Those are the primary, yeah.
But it, it has grown significantly.
It's definitely up there.
I want to say eight within the hundred, you know, yeah.
We had a meeting on, on Friday just with a, a woman from another district too, just thinking about changes for our district moving forward with the increase of students and going the route of potentially establishing family liaisons within the community. You know, our status may be a parent advisory group at some point down the line. But just trying to create that community support for our parents built right in.
Yeah. So other just, just kind of artifacts or kind of references that can be made in regard to just a demonstration of us communicating with the, communication, because that's part of, part of this, is, you know, we do a Zoom call with the community every week. This is an unscripted, unscripted access. You can call and ask whatever you feel like you need to ask. Sometimes those conversations are spirited, which is okay. It kind of keeps us on our toes. You know, the feedback sometimes is, you know, we talk, when sometimes we use protocols to look at curriculum and things, we'll talk about cool feedback and warm feedback. Warm feedback kind of feels good, cool feedback. And sometimes the, the feedback on those calls are a little beyond cool. Sometimes it's cold, right? But, you know, we, but we need to hear it. We need to hear it. And, and the fact that, I think we've been open to it, and I say we because I don't do it alone, but that, but the fact that I think we've been open to it has only made us better. So just other, just ways that we're communicating. You know, we, we collaborate with Board of Health. We collaborate with, with Steve Mayo and his team. And we participate in, in our weekly COVID calls. It's interesting. I'm, I'm hard pressed to think that, this is like a little bit like the things that are happening during COVID that are, are here to stay. I think the call might be here to stay. COVID might go off the, the agenda, but I think access, like, once you provide it, it's hard to think, it's hard to take it away. And I also think on our weekly call that happens with the town, I, I think that that might continue as well, but I can't speak for, for Steve. You know, we talked about launching a new student information system. We are actively working with Jen McDonald. Jen helps us with our communication. We are also kind of brought in support from Gilfoyle and their communications team. We met with them today. They're going to be helping us in kind of, I don't want to say marketing, but kind of getting information out about our kindergarten, our K, our K information night for parents that are sending students to kindergarten. So we're excited about that. And there'll be more information here. Obviously, we talked about, you've heard me talk about this. We're, we're thinking thoughtfully about, you know, we can't get all the counseling support that students and families need. If we can't do it with Plan A, how do we do it with Plans B or C? And we're talking about collaborating with Elliot and the Board of Health to create more of a public health model for counseling services. So that is a very quick update. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. I feel like I'm really kind of proud of, of the adults that, that are, you know, the, the administrative team that's here. And, and again, I think we all, like Rosie, we're just in different places on the continuum. I think we're all have a healthy respect for one another. And, and I will tell you, I respect the daylights out of the talent that Rosie has or, and, and the expertise that all the members of the team, Christine and Cara, kind of bring to the table, right? We wouldn't be able to do half of the work that we're doing if it weren't for the group. But that's where we're at. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Michael?
I just have a comment.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't mean to in any way short-shift the teachers of what everybody's gone through the last two years because it's epic, unprecedented what we've all gone through. But what the administration has gone through, I sort of equate to making dinner while a tornado was flying over your house. And, and it's the amount of things you've had to deal with. And we could spend all night listing what's occurred that none of us ever had to experience before. But, but you tend to be the target of very much undeserved criticism on a regular basis. And you just put your head down and you keep going it. So this, like everything you guys have done, has been amazing. So Doug, Cara, Christine, the principals, Rosie, kudos to all of you. You've done an incredible job during incredibly adverse conditions. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this illustrates, right? We, we spend so much time in these meetings talking about some of the controversial things. And in the background, the team is just like making things happen. And this is a great way to kind of see all of the, all of the great things that are happening that we, we haven't spent as much time as we could have because there's been other things we've had to work through. But it is a nice reminder to take a step back away from some of the, I don't want to call them distractions, but the other things that we've had to deal with to remind ourselves of the good work and progress that's being made at a time when it's pretty hard to make progress. And it's, it's work you guys should be really proud of. It's good stuff.
So we're going to share a, a recording of a Zoom meeting that took place today with, with you all. And, and it was, so Missy Lesser, you've heard the name. She's going to be presenting at Parent University. But, but this week is Massachusetts Civic Learning Week, right? And I can't think of a, a kind of a greater representation of where we are as a district right now than what I observed today. So as part of Massachusetts Civic Learning Week, there's a little professional development offering every day for teachers or administrators, right? And so today, Missy Lesser presented with Margaret Messier and Jason Pavy, and, and I'm sorry that she left, Lauren Blois and, and Ellen, Elena Greco. And they talked about, you know, the history that they're learning, the curriculum that's being developed, how it's being developed. But it, it was beautiful in that Jason Pavy set this up and then let the students talk. Just let the students talk. And so, you know, I saw Jason this afternoon, and I said, you know, you look brilliant when you bring these kids. And you just let them talk just for a few minutes. Like, it's a little like being here at school committee and watching the kids talk. You think they're, this is what it's all about, right? But the feedback from the adults were like, how did you get these kids here? How did you get them to talk? Like, who are, are they part of the curriculum work that you're doing? And so Cara and I have had this conversation many times, right? Like, so, you know, it's in normal circumstances, or in, in most cases, you would see, you know, an administrator talking about how great their district is, right? We're doing this, we're do, you know, we're crushing it. But when you see an administrator, when you see coordinators, and then when you see students all standing or sitting side by side, presenting uniformly whereas seamlessly, they talk about this is our goal, this is how it progressed, this is the work we've, we've done. I, I feel like in, in terms of a demonstration of, or a model, an exemplar, of what we want, I can't think that, that is exactly what we want. We want kids to be able to talk about, you know, I, I think my math teacher was at professional development. I think they're learning about, they shared their learning. It affected our learning, we did X, right? Those are the structures that are going to start to take place. And, and we can't, we can't do this without significant relationships. But we also can't do this without being able to work collaboratively in unique ways that, to be honest with you, other people aren't. Other people aren't. And so, you know, Jason Pavy said to me today, you know, Doug, as a context, you know, he had shared that one of the, one of the persons that he's working with travels around, Missy Lesser, travels around to other districts. And, you know, she was able to share, like, her ability to work directly with students is, and, and the outcomes that are being created here. And this is all about Margaret and Jason and the students, right? They report to us. We would like to do X. Can you help us? Can you support us? We kind of contribute thoughtfully and really just get out of their way. It's, it's amazing. And, and when I was meeting with Jason, we were in Erin Kresos's class, and Erin Kresos was talking about wanting to do podcasts with her class. And we have a podcast lab right next door here at WCAT. So we made that, and, I mean, just, there's really nice stuff happening that we can't report enough about, right? And it's really about people and relationships as a starting point. I'll leave it there. I know our meetings are long.
I have a couple of questions on, on the slideshow. And everything you say, that's fantastic. I love the team building that I, that we see when people come in front of us. We've only just begun the school tours, but that was on high display on our first tour at the Woodville. There's just, it's pervasive and it's, it's wonderful, so. But more directly to the slideshow.
Do you want me to go back a slide?
No, if we could just talk a little bit... No, if we could just talk a little bit about the difference between, uh, like the 10 years ago, when we had to sort of adopt, um, or adapt what the state rubrics were going to be, and then we decided to do it locally.
Yes.
And you talk about things like the need to sort of readjust what those rubrics are, what those measurements are, whereas Desi has like these, you know, rooms full of people that can just constantly update, you know, what their measurements are going to be. As a district, um, if we did choose that path to adapt.
Adopt, do you mean?
Adopt would be if we took theirs. Adapt is if we adjust them.
We just what we have.
Yeah.
Continue to adjust?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we're looking to adjust, um, is there a cadence in which that happens? Is it real time or is it like, because it takes work, right? So how often are we looking at those rubrics to see if they align?
Well, um, we, so the, the, the current supervision evaluation manual that we have, I think was last updated in 2018. Um, and so, and it had been updated, I believe, two times previously. And so, um, so that's, that's work that took a cohort of people to develop rubrics. Um, you know, Kim Smith and I worked for two years, uh, to add an addendum to the rubric that allowed people to make references to student work, right? And, and, you know, how do you show artifacts of, you know, your, of student growth or student progress? You know, student, teachers struggle with that. Like, if I'm, if I'm, you know, in a special education class, how do I show artifacts differently than math, differently than science, differently than fine performing arts? Um, so we developed a rubric that allowed people to do that, right? And so, but that took a year to develop, right? Um, and then we kind of adjusted it and we shared it with teachers. We had a, a group of, of people that were working on it. But that's one example of, of how we, we have adapted. The problem now, Stephen, is, is that, um, the, in, in terms of the turnaround time, which was the, the nature of your first question. So the, the turnaround time, they're close enough. They're, they're exactly the same in structure, four standards. Um, the elements and indicators are close enough where it would not be a, a kind of a radical shift. We would still need to negotiate it with teachers just to include them in the process, because they're the ones that are going to be, I, I, again, ideally you heard me say that this is a self-directed process. They're going to use it to guide, um, their growth and development. So we want them to buy into it. So, yes.
I asked the question because the way it sort of looked was that, um, this was the, I was thinking that this is the first time you were looking at it since the initial inception 10 years ago, and I did not imagine that that's what was going on.
No, no, it's a, it's probably.
If this is like, uh, so you said it's been since 2018, looked at it two times, you know, before that perchance, or maybe like a four-year rotation, give or take. Would you say every, it's a top-down thing every four years, or it's more organic than that? Whereas you look at where, you know, or after four years, you've generally turned through the entirety of the structure of it, but, you know, you pick, um, sort of what the more important pieces are and put them in priority. So we're going to take a look at, at, you know, special needs learning, and then we're going to look at, you know, diverse needs, or is it something that's more organic, or do you just go top-down, start to finish, one through 10?
I think it's, I don't think it's either, on either extreme. I don't think it's top-down, and I don't think it's completely organic. I think it has to be done kind of together with teachers, right? And so, but if, if I'm, if I'm understanding your question, right? The elements and indicators, there are so many elements and indicators, right? It's, it can be overwhelming. It's, it's not different than the super, the superintendent's rubric. You think, oh my goodness, there's, you know, just so much, um, you know, so what are we going to focus on? And I think one of the things, one of the reasons we do this is because supervision evaluation for superintendent, after year four, should be self-directed as well. That's why we're trying to highlight, you know, not only what we would like to focus on, but we also take feedback from you all in regard to our subcommittee work and things like that. Um, but I, I do think, you know, it's a process that we need to look at, because the Department of Ed, for example, can create a, a, you know, a counselor's rubric, can create, you know, rubrics specific to positions, right? So, and, and we need that range so that, you know, everyone isn't all kind of using just one rubric to, to look at their, their growth and development. So that's, I'm simplifying it. It might be easier to share artifacts of what these things look like.
I think maybe we had seen that, uh, a couple of, of instances ago. I feel like you had shared out that rubric at one time, and I was blown away by the actual, like, the breadth of it. It was.
It's a lot.
It is a lot. Um, but no, I was, I was more concerned with sort of how, how, when often, how often are we taking a look at that?
Yeah.
As it relates to sort of what the expectation is of the, of the state. Um, but it seems like we're in alignment.
So, so the year, not this academic year, but last year, uh, we negotiated, um, a memorandum of understanding, Tom led this work, um, with the teachers, to use a modified supervision evaluation tool, and we used the state rubric. So, so it's not ra, it's not a radical shift. And, and what we did was, the state had said, you know, during COVID, I'd like you, we're suggesting, gently suggesting, that you focus on these few indicators. And we negotiated that, and we used the state rubric, and it was agreed upon. And so, you know, it's not, um, foreign, a foreign document, right? So, yeah, more to follow on that.
Thank you.
So, I, again, we're, we're just trying to make the, the, we're just trying to make it better than we found it, right? We're just trying to make it more accessible for teachers, um, and make the process something that, that they feel good about, right? And so it shouldn't be drudgery. It should be a little like me being kind of pleased to be able to talk about the progress that we're making. So, that's it.
Okay. So committee reports.
Or not it.
Can I just make, so, so I'm sorry. I, I just, I just looked at my. I used all my talk tickets? So I, I just want to say, the Wizard of Oz is happening May 6th to the 14th, and Parent University is happening?
It's continuing through March. Yep.
Thank you.
Um, presentations on, on Thursdays. Um, we're skipping St. Patrick's Day though.
Thanks so much. That's it.
The other Thursdays left.
Okay. Subcommittee, um, reports. I kind of gave part of mine during the, um, oh my goodness, I can't even think.
Budget hearing?
The budget hearing. Um, but I did want to, there was one other topic that we covered um, on last Thursday's meeting, which was a review, um, of the capital requests that had been, uh, reviewed with the Capitol Planning Committee, I think earlier that week. Um, and it was, it was a good chance for us to get an update of kind of the reaction from that group. We have the, we have tiered, um, kind of requests. We have tier one requests, tier two requests, and, and the feeling was that, um, that the committee had some questions about the tier one. Um, they had a couple of questions about tier two, um, and that at an upcoming meeting, they will kind of vote on which pieces and which items get kind of approved at the Capitol level. Um, it, it was a good conversation and, and a reminder that we have, um, a super, a, a strong relationship with kind of the town and, and with that group in, in particular, um, in kind of reviewing our, our asks, asking thoughtful questions. Um, one of the items, the, um, the scoreboard in the fieldhouse, the DPW?
Yes.
DPW kind of is already taken and is taken care of, so we're not even going to have to ask for that money. They're actually going ahead and replacing it. Um, so it's, it, we as a subcommittee wanted to make sure that we mentioned at tonight's meeting, kind of the, um, being thankful for the collaborative relationship that we have with that group and their support of kind of the asks that's, that we've been bringing forward and the improvements that, um, that we're able to make, um, by putting those requests in, you know, they tend to be big buckets of big investments. Um, and so we're looking forward to kind of seeing what, what the outcome of that is, but we felt really good about that review. Um, and I, we are not meeting this, no, we are meeting this week. We're meeting on Friday morning. Um, yeah, so we do have a meeting this week. Um, and that's it from me. Anything from the high school group beyond the high school project, beyond what Doug has already kind of given as an update?
No, the meeting last week, the, the biggest conclusion was that they wanted to, they'll be, they'll be making a presentation towards that on our next meeting.
Yes.
Well, they've asked to, so that needs to be.
Yep. So that's on the agenda for the 22nd. Okay. Uh, Labor?
Uh, actually, we've not met since last week, but we are meeting with Unit C, um, for our second negotiation, uh, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay. Uh, Student Services, Mike?
Yep. Uh, we met last Wednesday, just after our Tuesday meeting, uh, and Andrew Sidroni was invited again, and if, if you haven't had the pleasure, he's a force of nature. Uh, I could listen to him all day. He's amazing, the energy he brings to conversation, the enthusiasm. So he was great. Uh, Amy brought up a couple of great questions about theater arts and how it relates to our current curriculum and education around disability awareness and acceptance. So we, uh, we had some good conversations, uh, last time. That's it.
Awesome. And then Kevin?
Yeah, we haven't met since last Tuesday, but we are scheduled for one week from today. So we'll meet the 15th at four o'clock.
Okay. Um, next meeting is March 22nd. Like we've said, Left Field will be in to get, to give an update on the high school project. We'll be voting on the budget that night. Um, and I'm sure we'll have some other topics.
We will.
And with that, um, School Committee comments. I'm going to go to you first, Kevin.
Great, thank you. Uh, just a couple of things. It's been like a few references have been made to our visit to Woodville, and just want to thank, uh, the school community there for being hospitable and the students for showing us around and the faculty for letting us observe. It was, it was a really wonderful, I'm not going to be able to make all of them, but I'm going to try to, to squeeze out of work for as many as I can. So thank you, Cara, for setting them up. It was, it was a great experience. I'm looking forward to continuing, uh, on with those. Um, today's International Women's Day, so I just want to take a moment just to recognize all the women that have an impact in my life, all the women around this table who are amazing and do so much work, uh, for all, all the school system, um, and all the amazing people identified as women, as teachers and staff who, day in and day out, do just do a great job. And, and just to express my appreciation for everything, uh, everyone's doing in that row. Uh, congratulations to the boys' basketball team. Did we hear about girls?
Girls did not win.
Okay, so, but congratulations on a good season though. That's all that matters.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's an exciting time. I know a lot of the, a lot of the sports and all the athletes, student athletes are doing great. So, um, it's, it's great for just school pride, town pride, and look forward to, my supervisor happens to live, um, where they had the game tonight, so she was texting me from the game. So I was, it's nice that we came out on top, so I'll definitely rub that in. What's that?
Supervisor? I thought you were the boss.
Well, yeah, there's always a supervisor somewhere, so, um, yeah. So she, uh, she lives in that community and her kids go to school there, so that was really nice. Um, but yeah, that's it. Thank you.
I have a visual. So if you see this bright yellow flyer on social media, um, it's a, a learning about differences in disabilities parent forum. Thanks to the WEF, Wakefield Educational Foundation, and the Wakefield Arts Council, and the elementary PTOs were bringing in a disabilities advocate. His name is, um, Sam Drazen. And as part of his work, he's hosting a parent forum on March 16th. It's going to be in person at the Walton. There's no kids there, so we don't have to figure out the rules. Um, and then, but he'll have a Zoom option as well. So it's probably, it's seven to eight. Um, the flyer will be distributed by the PTOs, but we hope people can join. He's a really, he worked with Walton School last year, so we know he's good. So that's all. Thank you.
Amy?
Um, I just wanted to share something I read today, uh, just a quick, a couple sentences. Everybody knows I'm a big advocate for mental health, so I follow and about, um, non-vaping and smoking and things like that. Um, so I follow truth.com a lot. I recommend everybody go to that website. There's a lot of really good tips, um, on there for helping people to, um, combat addictions and things like that. So on there today, they're, um, promoting an event that's coming up. So it says, "On April 27th, people from across the country will gather together to reclaim their mental health and take a collective breath. Join in from anywhere and organize a group of friends to take a breath. Our collective actions will demonstrate to the White House and all our decision makers that we will stop at nothing to protect our mental health." So just something I wanted to plug on the 27th. Again, you can go on the, um, the truth.com and get more information. So that's it. Thanks.
Mike?
I just had a couple of things. First of all, I'm going to put a plug in for Suzie's son, Trevor, who is playing with the varsity hockey, so I'm taking that away from you tomorrow night. So I hope you can all get there. We're all looking forward. They had a great win, first game. I'm sure that was a blast for Trevor, where he's, he's new to the team in this regard. So, and congratulations to the girls on a wonderful season, and obviously the boys for continuing. But one other thing I wanted to mention is there is the TSF Phone -a-Thon, which occurs on the 19th of this month. So this is a, this is the major fundraiser for, for TSF. So just to remind everybody, last year, TSF gave out $730,000 in scholarships, averaged probably about $4,000 per kid. So it's an amazing organization that I've been fortunate to be part of. So if you can, uh, contribute in any small way, I'm sure that would be appreciated. Thanks.
Stephen?
Um, similar to Kevin, when he was mentioning that today was International Women's Day, the HRC was putting on a program, uh, this evening at seven, which is where I assume everyone was tonight. Um, and so, and I think it was recorded, so even though we weren't able to watch it, um, you can go back and see it. A lot of, uh, just great leaders in town, um, very diverse backgrounds, sort of talking about their experiences. Uh, I think it's definitely worth a, a listen. Um, I would share a little anecdote is, so we have new neighbors at our, in our, at our house next door, and they came and they introduced themselves. And as they were introducing themselves, I heard drummers, uh, drumming, which I haven't heard since, uh, football season ended, um, because I can often hear them from the high school. But no, now they were practicing out in front of the Galvin as part of the Winter Core and Winter Guard Show, um, and I just love that sound, and so do my kids. And now when the neighbors say, "What do you like about Wakefield?", I say, "That's one of the things." Um, and I always say that one good thing, how you know that you moved to a good town is if they fund a marching band or drum corps. You know that, like, they put money, um, into the arts, into education, uh, and Wakefield does that in spades. And so I appreciate it, sort of as we talk about finance, knowing that, um, how important we take, um, sort of where all of those dollars go and what it means to our community as a whole. Um, and just in, just to close out our, our tour of the Woodville, um, what came through and what I, I think we'll see more of at the other schools, which I'm excited about, is just that, um, that district goal, that, that team building, that teamwork. There were stories from educators that sort of came up through the system, um, which, which was a big deal. They sort of believed in the same sort of ethos that, that we try and sort of impart. Um, and then there, there was a, we give educators rooms, room to sort of do what they can do with the tools that they're given. And I'm consistently surprised at how they always find the space to sort of fit in what our students need on every level. Um, and in talking with someone during our tour, you know, they found a space for, you know, there was a chunk of time, and there were some educators that had some, some time on their hands, and they just sort of cobbled together a program and just said, "Go, you know, find this time to be constructive." And the administration gives them space to do that. Um, and I imagine that happens everywhere across the district, and I just think that that freedom is important. Um, and I think we just see successes from that. So thank you for giving them the room. Thank you for those people that take that upon themselves, to sort of find that space, um, and engage. It's, it's great work.
Awesome. Tom?
Thank you. Um, I guess certainly without being terribly redundant, I really want to echo everything my, my colleagues have said tonight, really some really positive and, and exciting, uh, things, things to share. Um, and it's really, I think one of the things that just in, just in listening to the things that you've, you've all said and listening to the last couple of hours, um, it's almost like it's good to be back. I mean, we're now talking about teaching and learning again. Not that everything we haven't gone through wasn't important to get us to through difficult times and important times, um, but that this, this, this is a meeting that is representative of the future of teaching and learning in Wakefield, from, from special education to international trips to, uh, you know, outstanding athletes and students, and it's just really, it's inspirational frankly, to have sat through, uh, uh, tonight's meeting. So I echo what everyone has said. Um, I think it also is, is, is representative, uh, in the work that the superintendent leads, uh, in a very humble way. Um, uh, he obviously shared with us, you know, his sort of, you know, mid-year assessment of his work and the work that he leads. Um, and I think it's incredibly appropriate, uh, and, and very kind that you be humble. Uh, but at the same token, we also need to recognize that you are the leader of this district and, uh, providing some incredibly important work, uh, taking on some, um, some tasks, some of which are not easy, some of which are, are brand new, um, and doing it with, uh, with resilience, uh, with energy, with creativity, and with love. And, um, and that doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you.
So, um, in addition to what's happening, um, I just wanted to put in a plug also for the senior show this weekend. Um, I don't have a, have a senior, but having had a senior and having a junior, sort of in that, like a, like a little, like a. in that, like a, like a little, like a little, a little, little sandwich there, they are thrilled to be back in having a show. It just, you know, the last couple of years of non, or the last year, rather, of non, non-shows, because the Class of 20, what Nora was in, it just made it under the, under the wire. So the Class of 20 had a show. But the senior show is this weekend, Friday night and Saturday night, 7:30 at the Galvin. And it's, if you can make it one of those times, it is just incredible, the work that the kids are putting in. Very, very exciting night. So, thank you all for, for being, for being us.
I don't really have too much to say tonight. I'm a little sad that I missed the Woodville visit, but I'm hoping to get to the Greenwood and to the high school, at least try and make a couple of the, of the rounds. But it, it sounds like that was a really great experience, so I'm looking forward to being a part of that. And super excited for the boys' basketball team. It is, it's pretty amazing to make it past the round of 16. Now they're going to be in the round of eight. My son sent me a note, they're playing in a neutral location on Friday night. He's very excited. And we'll go to the senior show on Saturday night. And I'm, I'm really excited for the hockey team. The hockey team, they, someone wrote up, and I don't remember where, but they called Wakefield a sleeper team. There's a lot of talent there and, and these kids want it really bad. So it's going to be really fun. We're going down, it's in Walpole tomorrow, and my in-laws are all, live in Walpole, and so it's going to be a big giant family party down in, in Walpole at Broadman Arena. But I'm really looking forward to that, to that, and really wish the Warriors hockey team, boys hockey team, a lot of luck tonight, or tomorrow night, excuse me. And I think with that, we can motion to adjourn.
Okay, if you insist.
Get out early.
I am delighted to make a motion. I move the school committee adjourn its meeting on Tuesday, March 8, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor. Good evening. Have a, have a great night, everybody.
Thanks very much.
Good night. Good luck tomorrow.